Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We'll begin by reading a script. This is Select Board Chair Tom Lucusa. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Strange.
Here.
Steve Marax.
Here.
Richard Foster.
Here.
And Mark Gold.
Here.
His staff, when I call your name, please respond the affirmative. Lynn Simons.
Here.
Paul Missersick.
Here.
And Deb House.
Here.
Okay. We do have some speakers on the agenda. Mary Beth Bergeron, are you with us?
Yes, here.
Okay, thanks. And Chief John Dearborn.
Here.
Okay. And I think that's it for Speaker at this point. All right. The next thing is the open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely. Consisted to Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth and due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's Office suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with this agenda materials for the meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting won't feature public comment. For this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For once in comment, after announcements COVID nineteen update and general announcements, I will afford public comments as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their addresses only. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name, affording three minutes for any comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using this posted agenda unless I know it otherwise. We are now moving to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair deals support you and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a little call. And so, the first order of business is the update on COVID by Chief Dearborn.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, excellent. Well, good evening, folks. I've got some, I think, exciting stuff to talk about today, but I'll talk about our numbers to start off with. So today, we sit at fifty-one active cases in town. That's down from about one hundred fifteen we were averaging through the surge. We've been trending downward since then, which is good news. We have not seen a post-new years. Majority of our case within families, family groups, we are seeing a slight acceleration in cases that are long-term care. They do have really good control plans, but we did get some cases of those. We're currently in red. We're just over the five percent positive positivity rate. If the numbers continue this week the way they're going, we stand a pretty good chance of dropping back down to the yellow, which would be great. We're gonna be borderline, but I'm hopeful for that. Just want to emphasize to the public and everybody in the meeting that we still need to engage in all protective strategies, wear masks, washing hands, social distancing, trying to stay out of those settings where, especially for the vulnerable population, where this can spread. I've stated before that this section of the or phase of the pandemic appears to be performing differently. I know you've probably heard of this variant that's around. I have no evidence to base that that's actually in Long Meadow. But it seems to be very contagious and once it gets into a family or household, it just runs right through the household. So that's been concerning. So talking a little bit about vaccines, part of my update. So we're in phase one right now. So the primary things that we needed to really concentrate on in phase one was getting, making sure our long-term care facilities were engaged in that process. That's actually through the federal program. Our three long-term care facilities are engaged and they'll be starting to get vaccinated in the first round this weekend. Second part of phase one for us was to get our first responders vaccinated. We started with a two-town program. The minimum we could do to do a first responder clinic was you had to have two hundred first responders. Obviously, we have sixty-three within our police and fire, so we couldn't do it on our own. So we partnered with East Long Meadow. We started out with that. That grew rapidly. And then we picked up Hand New World Brand, Love Low and Chickaby. So it's been really good. We've been moving through that. We've learned a lot. I'm kind of glad. Some of our paramedics, well, actually, most of my paramedics have been working in the clinic. We've been directly involved from providing the labor for them, learning an awful lot for the next step. So I'll talk a little bit about the next step. So phase two and three. You've probably seen some of the website. We're trying to, as we gather information, I'll talk a little bit about information here in a minute. We've been trying to push that out, but we are fully engaged to do a phase two and three clinic. So for everybody, the next clinic is the seventy-five, two more, no more abilities, over sixty-five, eight throughout, twelve teachers and staff and essential boys, which in our case is our DPW facility. There's a few more in there as you go down through the steps. So we've hired a vaccine coordinator, actually another retired fire captain we brought back. He has, he'd actually worked with DPH or H one N one and the post-anthrax stuff doing training for hospitals. Name is Carl Zedek. You probably remember him. Carl grew up in town here. He worked at Fire Department for about four hundred years before he retired last year. Great guy. He's fully engaged. And we've got the whole COVID team, which is as of tomorrow, we've, or if you don't include Lynn and I, we seem to be full-time employees on that also. So just a little bit about our clinic, we're going to be using the old daycare section of the Greenwood Center. We've got it all designed. For the physical plant or the actual logistics part of it, we're actually, we're pretty much there. We just need to really set up the clinic at this point, emptying some rooms, still things that, things like storage, PPE, all the supplies, things like that, we already have. We were trying to be forward-thinking on that way back during the summer when PPE was readily available, place orders for all the things. Some of the things you don't think about, like Sharps containers, you know, which are those, those red containers you put needles into. We need the capacity for six thousand needles. So all of that stuff we've got ordered, it's in stock. Temperature controllers and monitors for the storage of the vaccine, we have that on the stock. Refrigeration, freezers, everything, we have everything we need to start. Thing we don't have right now is vaccine. So we're working on, there's a couple of different computer programs that come into play here. So one of them is basically the registration management software. So the state has that through the launch. We're getting some exposure to it with the first responders clinics. We're learning what it does well and some of the things that provides challenges with it. I think we'll be in good shape by the time we get to our clinics. We'll have a pretty good understanding of that. That software is an online registration. You go on. When you, when you hit your time to get vaccinated, we'll announce that and it'll be media and all our various ways to announce it, COVID calls, things like that. We'll ask you to go to the site and register. You register, it'll ask you a whole bunch of questions, ask for some information, you actually book your appointment. Two or three days before your appointment, it actually sends you a reminder. It says, hey, you gotta come and get your shot today. And actually, the morning of it, it sends you another reminder. The case of our clinic will be using Moderna vaccine, which is a twenty-eight day spread between the first and the second dose. It does require two doses. So week before, actually, two weeks before, if I understand it correctly, the client say, hey, register your second appointment. And then it'll give you a window, a three-day window where they recommend you, you register. They don't want you to register early. They did give us information that there is a, if you're late, it's not as big as issue as being early. So they'll queue you to register again. For those citizens in our community that may not be computer savvy, we are, in fact, we're going to be staffing at your phone line. Where a resident can actually call and somebody will register for them. Now, problem with that is they won't get the reminders. So that's a disadvantage of that. And depending on the numbers of people we have that choose that, that system, they may or may not get through the reminders. It does do phone reminders and text reminders, but again, first is not user. So we're gonna look at that a little deeper to make sure that we can get to those people. In the other aspect, that'll be tracking the second doses. So we'll put a lot of thought into that. We're closer to the council aging. Those of you know Lindsay down there, she's on our team, working with volunteer management. She's awesome. And Julie and Jim are fully engaged, the leader, our veterans agent will be helping us out to make sure we get all the veterans. We also solicited today, we've got our solicitation for volunteers. We're gonna need a lot of help to do this. So based on what we're looking at right now, kind of ballparking, again, we, the big question is, we're planning based on some, a lot of assumptions, that we're going to get a certain amount of vaccine every week. I generally, I'll be honest with the board and those on the call, that I'm concerned about that because that does not seem, there seems to be no guarantee on how much vaccine you'll get every week. We're gonna plan around that. We're actually planning for sixteen weeks of operations with this clinic, five days a week, Tuesday through Saturday. Excuse me. We're also planning on perhaps one night a week to run later in the hours, perhaps, perhaps start later and go to nine o'clock. We're kind of looking at what some of the other clinics are designing and how they do that. So it's a long-term operation, so we're gonna need a lot of help. So we solicited volunteers today. Our goal is to get a hundred people upstaffed. That's everywhere from nurses, other practitioners that could administer vaccine, but we need a lot of logistical support. So people to help with registrations, both before the clinic and after vaccinations. People just to help get PPE, do trash readers. One of the aspects from the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccine is after you get it, somebody has to observe you for fifteen minutes. You have to get your shot. It's not just get the shot, run out the door. You actually have to sit down in a room and somebody has to watch you for fifteen minutes. We need people to do that. We have people in town that don't drive, so we do plan on having a transportation program utilizing the council. AGV and we've also entered into some preliminary discussions, so we're elite facilities to help them, have them help us with their vans and transportation depending on the need. So we need drivers. We need people to book those appointments. So there's plenty of work to be done. We, I think we have a pretty good framework in the next week or so. But it's really going to come together as far as our volunteer pool. Be training for the volunteers. We already have pretty much all that laid out. What I'm missing here, probably a hundred things, but. So yeah, I guess that's about it. I'm sure there's a hundred questions, so I'll head through the chair. I'll take some questions.
Okay. That sounds, one of the things I've heard over and over is that people who are providing the vaccine do not want to get a lot of phone calls because I can imagine everyone wants to call. And I know that you said, folks who don't have a computer, that there is an option for them. But it sounds like the best person to call for most people would be maybe your grandchildren who could get you hooked up with an online registration. They probably can do it on their phones even. But I know that you probably don't want a lot of phone calls.
It's really not how the system's designed, unfortunately. It didn't, probably didn't consider that. But certainly, if somebody has a, you know, a son or daughter or grandkids that could help them with the registration. But this is kind of a leave no one behind approach we're taking. So we want to make sure that if they can't register or if they're homebound, actually, I didn't talk about that, they're gonna get this vaccine if they want it. We're gonna do whatever we can to facilitate that. So it's just one other thing. We do plan on scheduling nurses to go out. We're still working. The state hasn't done, has not come through with the protocol for that yet. So I really can't speak in detail to that, but we know there's a homebound need in the community. We do plan on addressing it.
Right, great. Are there any questions from any other members of the select board?
Chief Dearborn, just a quick question. We've heard a lot of reports about people, you know, emergency response, first responders and emergency technicians not getting the vaccine. What's been the ready to people in Long Meadow and our first responders attempting or going out to get the vaccine?
Yep, so I could speak to my department. I have twenty-six people on staff and twenty-five have received their first dosage. So it is different in other parts of the state though, Mark. I have heard up to twenty-five percent of first responders in some regions not getting it. It seems to be in our region that, I mean, I could tell you that we did an estimate based on rosters of each department in our mix. And it seems like we're going, we're using all that vaccine, so.
Okay, any other questions for the chief?
Tom?
Yes.
Chief, just a quick question in terms of, as, have you considered when I come get my first shot to make the appointment for the second one late then, at that time? Is that, that's up and considered as a modality to do that as opposed to?
Yeah, so we'd love you to be able to do that, but it's not the approach the state's taking right now, unfortunately. I think it's why everybody understands that a lot of this, about ninety percent of this is out of our control. This is an initiative that's never been undertaken nationwide. It's never been taken within the Commonwealth. In fact, it's never been undertaken in Long Meadow. So everything we do is new. There's a lot of good people working on it, but every day they're facing new and unique challenges with this. The biggest challenge is trying to predict when and how much vaccine is going to be available. We've had some, some clinics that have been shorted. Our clinic is on a, not. The system is built with checks and balances. So one thing has to line up with the other in order for you to order your weekly supply of vaccine, it's registrations and capacity and things like that. So I think by the time we open, a lot of that will be fleshed out, but I'm hopeful for that, so. And I agree with you, Steve. One registration, book both appointments, send reminders, whatever reason you don't take that approach yet. And we've asked.
Mark Gold, you have a second question?
Yeah, I guess the question I'm hearing is why are we running this five days a week and not fifteen or sixteen hours a day, seven days a week? And I know supply is clearly a concern, supply of vaccine, but if supply were no, if we knew we had the supply, could we, you know, ramp up this timing to do more in a day? I mean, you know, President-elect's committed to a hundred million doses in a hundred days. Gotta do it somehow.
I guess he can show me the vaccine and I believe that, just my personal opinion. Yeah, we, we actually are overstaffing for capacity right now. Based on what they're telling us, should be our, our average, two to four hundred a day. We can staff that within that eight-hour period. I just think the vaccine is gonna, is really gonna limit us. Yeah, the other thing is too, is I mean, staff and volunteers and management and things like that. We'll do it as fast as they can get us vaccine, but we have to start somewhere, so.
Yeah, John, one question. Are you gonna inoculate the volunteers?
Yeah, we're still, that actually was a subject of our, was a three o'clock call today. And that, we are definitely going to do that, just if we're going to do it here or have them go to another clinic to do that after we onboard them, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Okay, that's it. And thanks, chief. And I know you're gonna be pretty busy for the next month or two, but we appreciate all your effort to keep the community safe. Okay, the next thing we have is our, we have our, we could do either announcements or we could do, I know we have one resident comment and at least one. I think we might do the resident comment and then at seven thirty, we're going to have Representative Brian Ash join us. And so I'm thinking maybe we'll do the resident comment. I know Lynn, we had one individual that talked about.
Yes, I have two that have expressed an interest in speaking tonight. We have Cynthia and Frank.
Okay, so if we could start with Cynthia, just introduce yourself, tell us your address and.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Summer and I live at fifty-seven Farmington Avenue. And I'm speaking in favor of the resolution in opposition to state subsidies and incentives for biomass incinerating power plants in Massachusetts. Biomass pollution is harmful and if a plant is built in Springfield, it would affect our local community's air quality. Springfield is an environmental justice community, which has been named the asthma capital of the U.S. two years running by the Asthma and Alworth G. Foundation. And air pollution from biomass plants travels ninety miles. Long Meadow is only six miles away from the proposed plant. Even in the most advanced biomass plants, burning wood emits harmful pollutants that have been linked to many diseases. I'm a person with asthma and I'm married to a physician in Springfield who treats many, many people with respiratory disease. And I urge you to recognize this as a serious health problem in our area. Literally, people's lives are at stake. Springfield has carried on a ten, over ten-year struggle to prevent this plant from being built. And the Springfield City Council recently passed a resolution very similar to the one that's before you tonight. And Senator Lesser and Representative Ash have fought hard to get the biomass definition changes out of the two thousand and twenty climate bill. And they're working on this now. So the problem is that they want to change what they call the renewable portfolio standard to allow financial incentives for biomass that would make building the plant possible. So in a nutshell, here's how it works. Massachusetts RPS spells out what power plant sources count as renewable and how they qualify for subsidies. Under the current rules, a biomass facility is only eligible for subsidies if it uses sustainable forest products, reaches an efficiency standard of sixty percent and has fewer net carbon emissions than a gas fire plant over twenty years. The current proposed biomass plant doesn't meet this standard. However, they want to change the rules so that any plant like Palmer that gets ninety-five percent of its fuel from non-forest-derived residues would be eligible for subsidies. The Partnership for Policy Integrity estimates that the Palmer facility could get thirteen to fifteen million a year in subsidies and that would make it economically feasible. So the proposed regulations are now in the Joint Committee of Telecommunications, Utilities and Energy, the TUE Committee. And they may hold a public hearing before it issues its report to the Department of Energy Resources. A very important part of the resolution before you is to demand that there be a public hearing so Long Meadow residents and others who will be affected can actually make comments on this rule change. And another problem with biomass is it's not renewable. It takes ninety years for a tree to grow back to remove enough carbon at the rate at when it was cut. So burning biomass actually puts more CO2 into the air per unit of electricity produced than burning coal or oil. This is from the Manomet study of two thousand and twelve, which is the basis for the current RPS standards. And finally, I just want my tax dollars and bills to support technologies that promote energy efficiency and zero emission resources. I don't want to be funding air pollution, sickness, and death. And I think a lot of people in Long Meadow feel that way and I hope you do too. So thank you for listening and I hope you support it.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia. And Lynn, we have a second individual. We may, we'll just squeeze them in.
Yes, Frank.
Yes, hi, thank you. And good evening. My name is Frank Smith. I live at twenty Green Willow Drive in Long Meadow. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about an important matter that is on your agenda this evening. And I'd like to make a request, but before I do, I'd like to share a personal story about two family members. My younger stepson, Mark, had fifteen hospital admissions for acute respiratory distress, commonly referred to as an asthma attack, by the time he was five years old. Yes, I said fifteen hospital admissions. That doesn't count the number of times we rushed him to the emergency room in the middle of the night for inhalation therapy. Our doctor at the time told my wife and me that Mark was about as bad an asthmatic can get and lived to tell about it. My wife is also a severe asthmatic. Two years ago this month, complications from flu triggered an asthma episode and severe respiratory distress that required her to be in quarantine. She spent nine days in a hospital. These experiences are what compel me to speak to you this evening and echo the comments that you just heard. In the past year, I learned that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts commissioned a study on biomass sustainability and carbon policy by the Manomet Center for Conservation Sciences almost ten years ago. You can download a copy of the study at Mass. You can download a copy of the study at massachusetts.gov. Just go to the state's website and type in Manomet Study in the search bar. Page six offers a summary of the study's findings, and key among these findings is that burning wood and wood debris in a biomass incinerator emits twice as much carbon pollutants into the air as coal. And now to my request, I would like this select board to vote in favor of the resolution to oppose state subsidies and incentives for biomass incinerating power plants in Massachusetts. I make this request because I believe that thousands of lives across the Commonwealth will be affected if we don't stop this. Thousands have written to Governor Baker requesting that he sign the bill that the legislature put beforehand. The governor has ignored our pleas. Accordingly, I ask that you join Senators Markey, Warren, Attorney General Maura Healy, the Springfield City Council, many state legislators, and thousands of citizens to prevail upon Governor Baker to remove the revisions to the regulations in the state's renewable portfolio standard that allow taxpayer ratepayer incentives for commercial biomass incineration. I ask that you move to approve this resolution with all dispatch. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, are there, if there is any more, uh, Lynn, do you know if there's any other residents who want to speak?
No one else had reached out, but, uh, if someone else does want to speak, they can, um, raise their hand.
Okay. Well, good, and we will be right on schedule. I had, uh, spoken with State Representative Brian Ash about joining us this evening, and I know he is here, and so, um, you know, I, you know, we've counted on Representative Ash for quite a few years. Uh, he first was a, um, Brian, are you with us?
I am with you, Tom. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, thanks for having me. I appreciate it. Good evening, all the select board, Lynn, Paul, Chief, Mary Beth, Pete, Cynthia, nice to hear you, Frank. I think I get everybody?
It's a good start. Uh, so, uh, so I guess the first thing going on, I know that we've changed, um, well, we've had a new year, and so some of the bills that, um, were not dealt with last year will be given new numbers and so forth and.
Right. Yeah, just kind of obviously, I mean, I don't have to tell you or anybody watching, it's been a, uh, a strange and very difficult, uh, year, um, personally and professionally, I'm sure for most people, and it was the same was for, just like your meeting, you know, is now, uh, via Zoom. A lot of what we've done in the legislature since last March is over the phone or via Zoom as well, so it's been difficult at best to, uh, to keep things moving smoothly, but, um, our budget process slowed way down, obviously, because of the expenditures from, uh, with COVID nineteen has brought to the state, but more recently, we were finally reimbursed by the federal government, which should help us coming into our next budgets, uh, session. Our last budget normally is done by, uh, July, and we had to do it month by month after that because we just didn't have the revenue, um, with people getting a break, paying their taxes for a while, as well as, uh, all the money going out to healthcare and then waiting for the federal reimbursement, but now things are actually better than we thought they would be at this point, so I'm hopeful that by the time we get to the next budget session, which for the House, uh, the governor will come out with his budget in the next month or so, but the House does our budget in April. So if things keep going well, if the revenues keep coming in, hopefully we'll be in a better position coming this year. Um, so we can, you know, s- start opening up more businesses and, and hopefully helping out as many as we can. And as well, just changes, which I'm sure most of you know already, um, you know, Speaker DeLeo had been the speaker for the past, uh, twelve years, retired. And, uh, Ron Mariano is the new Speaker of the House, so things will be different anytime a speaker changes, um. Kind of the, uh, you know, the thought process change, how they do things, or priorities change, so he was just elected as the Speaker the last couple of weeks, so I'll be having a phone meeting with him in the next, uh, couple of weeks to talk about my priorities and then just to kind of give the people watching at home, uh, he will set up committee assignments soon as the session ends. Every two years, all committees are wiped clean, all chairs, vice chairs and committee members, and then the chair has to reassign, uh, I mean, the speaker has to reassign chairs, vice chairs and committee members to all these committees. And until that happens, we can't do any legislation because there's no real committees going, so that hopefully will happen in the next month, and then the legislation, Tom, like you were talking about, some legislation from the last session that will be refiled and then new legislation will be starting to do that, um. I think that got extended for us to February nineteenth. Normally it would have been in, uh, January, but due to everything that's been going on, I kind of, uh, had to push that out as well. I did want to mention one thing if I can to, Tom, um, for people at home, anybody who's lived in Long Meadow for a long time, I saw in the paper that a, uh, dear old friend, Cal Taniff, had passed away. Cal, um, lived in Long Meadow for quite a long time. He was ninety years old and moved to Maine a couple of years ago, but he was just a great, anybody knew him. He was just a great, great guy, and I just, uh, my heart goes out to his family, um, for anybody who didn't know him, uh, knows what a, what a sweet gentleman he was. Um, with that too, I just want, uh, chief, that was good to hear, um, I know Massachusetts has been in a kind of a tough situation with the, um, with the vaccine response and the amount of vaccines we've got and the percentage that have gone out isn't anything we are excited about. We are second to last in the nation, I think behind only Alabama, so, um, we've had, uh, meetings with the governor and, uh, Secretary Sutter's to try to make sure that a better plan is in place, which should have been already. There was ample time, um, ahead, but we really need to get that going so we can get back to doing our business the way we should be able to do it in person, so we can get back to doing everything else, uh, that we'd like to. So hopefully over the next month, things get sped up because I think early estimates where they had to average thirty-five thousand a day to reach, uh, the point, you know, to get eighty percent of the population in Massachusetts. Now, we have just under seven million people here, so quite a task ahead for sure. Uh, Tom, I don't know if there's anything, uh, in particular you want me to go over. There's a couple of things I was going to talk about, but I don't know if there are anything.
Well, one of the things that came before the board, um, early this year was dealing with crumbling foundations.
Yeah.
It didn't get forwarded to the, uh, um, to the town meeting, which we didn't hold anyways, but, uh,
Right.
I know you were gonna do a, a forum, I think, on crumbling foundations.
Yeah.
It postponed.
Well, myself and, uh, Senator Ann Goby were co-chairs of the Crumbling Foundation Commission, as well as, uh, we had, uh, members from various towns, Russ Dupree, one of the, um, Long Meadow residents also had his house impacted by it. He was actually one of the catalysts to kind of get this going, but for those who don't know, um, crumbling foundation, it's a, uh, there's a mineral in, um, it was J.J. Modis, a quarry in Connecticut, and starting in the eighties, uh, concrete that came out of this had, uh, and I always say it right, pyrotite, um. Anyway, what happens is when it gets moist, it could be ten, twenty, thirty years later, but if it gets moist, it starts to disintegrate, so somebody's foundation could be intact, as I said, for twenty, thirty years, and maybe there's a leak or there's moisture in their basement, and then it starts falling apart. And there really is no remedy for it. Soon as it starts falling apart, it's gonna disintegrate. So for some people, Russ and, and others unfortunately have had to deal with this, where they have to replace an entire foundation on their home, and they have to foot the cost because it's not covered by insurance, uh, and so we had to get together. The only silver lining for Massachusetts is that Connecticut, this happened to them a lot earlier, so they were a couple of years ahead of us. So, uh, members of Connecticut Legislature and some other people there have really been helpful getting us geared in the right direction, and we've, uh, myself, Senator Goby, filing legislation to, one, make sure we have captive insurance, which is basically our own insurance that would pay for people's, um, foundations if they can prove that it was pyrotite inspections, and setting up inspection, uh, making sure people know where they can go, who they can trust for inspections, and a few other things like that, but, um, that, yeah, Tom, that got slowed down with COVID, like everything else, uh, unfortunately, that got put on the back burner and there was no money over the last budget to pay for that or anything else, so that will be one of the things we'll be starting up with, uh, soon as this session gets underway.
Okay, uh, another thing is, you know, the issue of biomass, which we had two speakers talk about now, and I know that it was gonna go to the governor, and it was gonna happen last week, and there was some deadline there, and now things won't move forward until a new bill is proposed, is that?
Right. Well, first of all, I gotta say Cynthia and Frank probably explained it more succinctly than I ever could, so kudos to you guys, and seriously, thank you for for mentioning it and bringing up your concerns. The governor vetoed, so it's part of the bigger climate, uh, bill. And the governor vetoed the bill last week, and now he, uh, I think he said today or yesterday that they won't be taking any action till at least next week with this, so now it's our hope that we can get some of the language in there or make sure that biomass, we can either put a better definition on it, and I think the problem was initially that there was no good definition for biomass, or people just underestimated what it did. They didn't realize the carbon emissions coming out. Or, you know, I can only venture a guess why it wasn't, uh, why it wasn't done better to begin with, but now at least it gives a little bit more time, so, uh, as the legislature, we can either try to force the governor's hand or we can try to redo legislation or amend it.
Okay.
And for all the reasons that, uh, Cynthia and Frank mentioned too, uh, unfortunately, some of those things were never ta- either never taken into account or somebody ignored them.
Okay, and, um, I, I think I'd like to open it up to other members of the board who might have questions, um. So why don't you just forward those questions or give a shout?
Tom, this is Mark Gold.
Yes.
Yeah, good evening, Brian. I have a couple of questions.
Ladies Chairman.
Well, things, in Long Meadow, in Long Meadow, we had, uh, two local issues, I think, that went to the State House. One had to do with our, oh, Board of Electors or that, you know, it was an issue, and, and I was just wondering what the status is of that. Most citizens may not know what, what it is, but it was kind of trying to fix up a problem.
Yeah, it was, um, right, it was legislation that was done, uh, about a year or so ago, and then, uh, the town requested to pull it back. Unfortunately, didn't get it through the House because of, I don't know, a lot of other things that were going on, um. But again, when I speak with the Speaker, uh, this coming week, uh, I'm gonna bring that up and I, I'm confident we'll be able to get that filed as soon as, I mean, I'll get it filed and get it through as soon as, uh, this session gets going. I don't see any reason why it will get held up or anybody would object to it. So hopefully we'll have that and the town can go back to the way things were before.
Thanks, that was pretty administrative. The other, the other issue was something that was passed at a special town meeting about a year or so ago about recall of elected officials, and I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, that's what I thought you were talking about there, Mark. I'm sorry.
No, no.
All right, so use that answer for this question. What was the first question?
The first, the first question was our, our Board of Electors that, you know, we, we have two electors versus three electors and how the electors are appointed, and we have to actually go back to a, a, a home, home rule agreement on, on assigning Board of Electors.
I'm not sure if I follow this.
Lynn, maybe you can define it better.
It's the Board of Registars.
Yeah.
It's Board of Registars, yeah.
And Brian, um, that, that was, the answer you gave was actually spotted.
All right, go back to my first answer, Mark. So what was, what was the second question then?
No, the second question was just a town meeting proposal to request the filing of a petition to allow for the recall of elected officials. It's kind of a moot point at this point, but.
Yeah.
At a town meeting.
Um, I thought that was, was that part of the first legislation, Lynn, or was there a sec- I thought it was the same thing.
I'm not familiar with that one. I don't know if someone else has.
Well, it pre- it predates you, Lynn. There, there was act- actually, it was, it was an issue getting down in the weeds here. It was an issue that had to do with the school committee that the
Right.
town wanted the authority to be able to have a recall vote against school committee members, and it's not in our charter, and so.
Mark, it's the exact same answer, actually. It's, um, a home rule petition, that same thing, we can get that done the, uh, probably within the next month or so. And again, it's probably not an issue unless something came up, but we do want to get it out of the way.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions from board members? Representative Ash? How about Paul Mr. Zick? Usually, uh.
Yeah, Paul, any good question?
I, I, again, I, I'd just be curious if there's any, uh, um, magic with the FY twenty-two budget. I know that the revenues, um, have been outpacing the prior years and looking fairly decent at this point in time. Um, I understand that the budget will be based upon about a three and a half percent increase.
Yeah.
Um, and obviously, the additional money for chapter seventy go, um, to take care of educational costs, um, was kind of postponed and backtrack that was going into play. I just don't know if what the appetite is, is to get that back on track a- at, at the legislative, um, at the legislative level, um, in FY twenty-two, or, or what the feeling is in Boston about that.
Well, it's, um, I can tell you the appetite for the legislators is to go back there, but again, with a new speaker, I'm guessing he'll be on board with that, but, um, you know, he's just starting off as a speaker. I don't know where his pri- if his priorities are gonna be very similar to the last speaker or if he's gonna change gears. My guess is he will be very in tune to that. Um, he's been in support of it as a majority leader in the past, so I can't see that he wouldn't, as long as, um, the revenues keep staying consistent or better and, and we don't get hit with any, uh, any other surprising costs. But I'll have a better, uh, better, uh, clearer picture on that in the coming weeks.
Yeah, I imagine. So I guess the other question is, as you know, Meadow teeters on, on hitting the, uh, cap on proposition two and a half. I just don't know if there's an appetite for that at this point in time. You know, if the town does get to the point where it files, uh, special legislation. Um, again, I don't know if, if there's an appetite for the, uh.
That's a tough one, Paul. I brought it up last session, and I, I think people are, well, some, I, I just don't think really understood where we were at compared to other communities. They, they didn't realize that, you know, Long Meadow will be the first, mo- most likely the first to cap out. But I tried to explain at least to some that we may be the first, but it's, it's gonna be coming for other communities as well, so we have to come up with some sort of solution or figure out what we're gonna do, because, I mean, if Long Meadow hits it, then other communities start hitting it. We have to have some plan in place or decide what we're gonna do as a Commonwealth. So at least people know about it and they're talking about it. I don't know, you know, where the speaker's at or where some of the others are at or enough of them are at, uh, hopefully we can do something with it this session, though.
Right, I, I think you just gotta plant the seed at this point in time. Um, you know, our valuations look strong going into the next year, so it, you know, we do have a good window, but I do, I do also know that these things take time, so as long as you.
Right, yeah, we don't want to put this off until it's there. We got, you know, hopefully can get ahead of it.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, Brian, I have one question. Excuse me, uh, John, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was gonna ask you any questions. Richard, please.
Yeah, uh, but Brian, a- across the state, are you seeing any success?
I didn't even say, is it Richard Foster?
Yeah, Rich Foster, excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm the one that just says R W F O S. I stay incognito. Are you seeing anything across the state on people, uh, being successful on lobbying for, uh, or legislative, uh, approval for local option, uh, sales tax items like on fuel tax and that type of issues?
Um, yeah, there's definitely some have brought that up, um, and you know, going in, I think that we've got fifteen, sixteen new legislators, and I know some of the past legislators that came in the last session had brought up issues like that, so I'm sure as soon as we get going and we have our first caucus, um, that item or items, uh, like that will be brought up and we'll see, uh, how the rest of the House and, well, then the Senate as well, uh, see how, uh, in tune they are with that.
Well, they, do you, do you have any?
Brought up various, uh, issues like that.
Okay, do you, do you think, Brian, that it will stay as a local option, that we'll have to, to solicit for relief, or do you think there's a possibility it might be approval granted statewide?
No, Rich, I really don't know. Um, it, I'd be guessing at best right now, uh, again, not having gone through anything with our new speaker yet, I don't know what his appetite is for these type of things. I don't know if he's willing to be more progressive with this or, or he's gonna be a little bit more reluctant, so, um, kind of like I said to Paul with the other thing, some of this, it's gonna be over the next few weeks to a couple of months till we really see what his agenda is all about and what direction he wants to bring the House.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
But I, I'll tell you this, just knowing him for a while, he is very open minded. He's easy to speak with, so I'm. So I'm sure he'll, at, at the very least, listen to this and keep an open mind.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board to show up?
Chief, had a say.
Chief John, uh, would you like to say something, John?
Yeah, Rep, Rep, um, it's good to see you, my friend.
You too.
Just, you know, if you have an opportunity to talk to the governor about the vaccines, certainly Western Mass equity i- is, is becoming a concern. It seems like they're throwing more resources at the other end of the state. Another thing too is DPH does not have the resources for this right now. They need, you know, they need to farm it out like they do with the collaborative or, or something like that. Um, we're in a situation where it's three to seven days to, to change an administrator on a, on a software. I mean, and every time we hit those roadblocks, it's holding up our planning from advancing. It's incredibly frustrating. Um, you know, we're not far from being ready to put our boots on the ground here, but without getting those answers and those directives. So, uh, and I can certainly, I'd love to, you know, if you have time or you need any more information offline, I'd certainly offer that.
Yeah, I'd love to follow up with you then, maybe, uh, tomorrow. And Chief, we have, um, a call with, uh, Secretary Sutter's every week. And last week, um, all the Western Mass legislators, we really let her know, you know, where we're at with this and how we'd really like to see not only a better response statewide, but really to make sure we get the resources we need out here in Western Mass that we get not only the vaccines, but the support to be able to, to implement them. And I think that's been one of the biggest disappointments that, yeah, the vaccines finally came in from the federal government, but we've had a lot of time where a plan really could have been much better. I mean, yes, it maybe wouldn't be perfect, but I think things could have been, uh, dealt out and people and a process in place much better. So, um, they're well aware and they know of the frustrations from the legislature. So hopefully things get, uh, picked up a little quicker and more efficiently in the coming weeks.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, Brian, I can't thank you enough, uh-
Sure you can.
Added a lot. Okay. One more time.
No, my, my pleasure. I, I appreciate the work, uh, all of you are doing, especially in this difficult time. So thank you so much. And anytime you, uh, you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Yes, well-
And Chief, I'll catch up with you.
Okay. Well, later in the year, when the budget's out, we may extend an invitation for you to come back, uh-
Tom, I think that's a good idea after we get things moving. Then we can really have a clearer picture what's going on with the vaccines, where we are as a state with the budget and some of the other issues we brought up. So I'd be more than happy to.
A big, big help. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Yeah. Now, just because Brian is, is done, doesn't mean you should change the station or tune out. We have another star later, uh, Mary Beth Bergeron, who has some very exciting news for us. Uh, you don't want to tune out now. Um, but we are going to work through our agenda and the next thing is, uh, announcements. So, uh, Lynn, I believe you have some?
Sure. I didn't know if you wanted to do them, Tom. I'm happy to, to do them for you. Um, uh, so the satellite offices at the community house have a change in schedule beginning, uh, January eleventh, which was last week. Town clerk and the treasure collector's office are open on Wednesdays from ten AM to one PM and Fridays from nine to noon. They will no longer have Monday hours. And the treasure collector will hold special satellite office hours on Monday, February first to accept third quarter, uh, property tax payments. And that will be from ten AM to one PM for those that want to pay on in person. Yes.
Lynn, can I just add that the assessor's office will hold a satellite office hours too for those timeframes, uh, for people who need help filing an abatement application or have questions about their valuations. Um, the principal assessor by appointment or if some walk-ins available, uh, will meet with, with folks. Um, if people do make an appointment, to be better prepared to have your property card and things of that nature. But running those same, those same hours is the treasury collector, um, and the clerk that, um, the principal collector is also available. Principal assessor is also available those hours also.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn and Paul.
Um, I do have a couple more, um, Tom. Uh, the recycling and yard waste center is open on Saturdays only now from nine AM to noon through the winter months. Um, just, uh, um, for those that haven't noticed, the governor's, uh, COVID restrictions were extended until January twenty-fourth unless they are further extended. This limits gatherings to ten people indoors, twenty-five outdoors at both private homes, event venues and public spaces. And businesses, including restaurants, offices and retailers, uh, must limit occupancy to twenty-five percent capacity. And then just a friendly winter reminder that residents, uh, have the responsibility to clear snow from their sidewalks adjacent to their property, um, and to clear from the fire hydrants, uh, assuming we get more snow this winter.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I imagine we'll get some extension from the governor. The, the twenty-fifth of Ju- of January for this gatherings, uh, to change would be too much to, to be thi- to be thinking of. It would be a nice surprise. I don't think that's going to happen. Um, okay, we also, we've covered our resident comments. Um, for the historical commission, my understanding is the person did not, uh, want to move forward. So we would move to select board comments. Uh, do we have any select board comments? Okay. Hearing none. Um, I guess I would just make one comment. As many of you know, I've chosen to, uh, step in a small office with husbands and wives who, who don't get along very well. And when I look at what's happened in the country and especially the event of January sixth with the storm in the Capitol, it kind of reminded me of when you have two parties that look at each other and both say, you know, you are the problem and you are the problem. And I, and I see that that's really what's happening right now in our country. And so in my work, I need to negotiate with both of them to make some changes. And I believe that there are going to be a lot of changes on the horizon for both sides, you know, of this, uh, argument. And, uh, and I don't believe it's just between Democrats and Republicans, uh, and it's between a lot of different views about the way our country's been operating. And both can look at the other side and say, well, it's got to be, we've got to be able to do a better job than we have been. And so I think it's time for change. And, um, I, we should be against, and my, you know, forty-plus years of, of working with people is that when violence interferes with a relationship, it's very difficult to get out and that violence can escalate over time. And so the biggest opponent here is trying to eliminate any violence uh, between people who have a legitimate belief that they can use violence, uh, whether they are wearing a uniform or if they are protesting, you know, against the government. And so the sooner we can eliminate violence, uh, the better we can move forward to really making some resolutions that will last and make this a better country. And that's my comments. Uh, we will move on to the town manager's report. Lynn Simmons.
Thank you. Um, so just a quick update on, um, COVID nineteen. I know the chief went into much more, greater detail in his update. Um, but I just wanted to remind, uh, people that we have created a website specific to the vaccine, longmeadow.org/vaccine, who post, um, all information related to our planning efforts for the municipal clinics on that site. And we will also, as, uh, information comes together and we have, uh, a schedule to roll out, we will post that on Facebook, Twitter, the news media outlets and likely via code red on the town's emergency alert system. Uh, the board of health and the health department. So the newly constituted board of health held its first meeting last Thursday night. Both Chief Dearborn and I attended and provided a past, present and future review of town's pandemic response. The, uh, interviews for a public health director position have been held. No decision's been made yet on moving forward with an applicant. Uh, it's a very critical role, but uh, I want to make sure that we make the right decision and select the right person. So in the meantime, we have a plan in place to ensure that all matters are be- all, all matters are being attended to. And if you need to reach someone in the health department, please email health@longmeadow.org. Uh, Long Meadow Street improvements, we received confirmation and notice from Mass DOT about a design public hearing for the Long Meadow Springfield resurfacing and intersection improvement project. This is for Long Meadow Street, Route five and Converse Street. It's about point eight four miles of roadway. Due to COVID, this is going to be held virtually. And there is a link on the town website uh, to the virtual public hearing, which goes live on January twenty-eighth. And residents can submit comments to, uh, Mass DOT from January twenty-eighth to February eleventh. Uh, the Greenwood Place structure that was damaged during the August fourth tropical storm. The repairs have been made to that structure and it's now reopened. And that was further ahead of schedule based on the mild weather that we've had so far. Uh, the new DPW and adult center continue to move along. Furniture was delivered to the DPW facility this week. And, um, both facilities should hit substantial completion early twenty-twenty-one. Uh, at this point, plans for a ribbon cutting at both facilities will be made for later this year once, uh, we're a little further into the, uh, vaccine distribution and, um, when we can congregate outside. The, I already touched on the satellite offices at the community house during the announcements. Um, we found out, uh, in late December that we received an unanticipated reimbursement from the secretary's, Secretary of State's office uh, to assist with, uh, mailing of the November election ballots. We, we received an additional twenty-eight hundred dollars to help with the postage. The treasurer collector's position, as you know, is vacant. We posted for, um, the position. We had a minimal applicant response. This was before the holidays. We reposted the position in hopes of getting a better response after the holidays. In the interim, Amy Nelson, who was the assistant, was made the acting interim treasurer collector. And Stephanie Cummings was temporary, temporarily moved back from serving as assistant town clerk. Now serving as assistant treasurer collector. Um, the vacancy in this one position, uh, put a strain on us being able to keep the satellite offices open for those three days. And, um, we've made adjustments to those hours so that we could make sure we had adequate staff coverage. We have a new person at the adult center. Uh, we have hired an outreach coordinator. She is filling a vacant position that we had when we had an employee leave, uh, over the summer. I'm pleased to announce that Julie Pierce has joined the team. Julie is a Long Meadow resident and had most recently worked for Highland Valley Elder Services as the program director for the Elder Protective Services and Money Management Program. So once we, uh, have the facility open, you'll be able to meet people in. Uh, so we did a solar analysis for the DPW facility. This is for the old DPW facility or what will be the old facility. This was prepared by Rivermore Energy and it was funded through a Meda grant. The analysis is going to be shared with the Energy Sustainability Committee at an upcoming meeting. Um, I've started to reach out to the Conservation Commission, Planning Board and Zoning Board to discuss what types of permits would be needed. Uh, for zoning issues, there may be, if, as we consider, uh, installation of a community shared solar facility. And Planning Board has also started to deconstruct or demolish the existing DPW garage structures once the move to the new facility is complete. The open space and recreation plan has been given conditional approval from the state through January twenty-twenty-eight. This now allows the town to participate in upcoming grant, uh, opportunities through the Division of Conservation Service. There were ten items that were identified by the state that we needed to provide more information on. And we are working through those right now. And once we do, the open space and recreation plan will be given final approval. And lastly, um, which we touched upon with Rep Ash, the board of registrars, uh, uh, home rule legislation, um, this was submitted at the last session. Uh, unfortunately, it was not acted upon before the session closed and it will need to be refiled. I've been in contact with both Rep Ash and Senator Lesser and the legislation will be filed once the new session, uh, up. And as long as we're under the emergency orders, we will, uh, rely on the determination given by the elections division attorney that, um, we can continue to operate with our three-member board of registrars right now as opposed, as opposed to the election commission, which was, uh, uh, the general law at that town meeting. That's the end of my report.
Okay, great. Um, do we have any questions from the board members, um, about town manager's report? Mark Gold, I see your hand up, please.
Yeah, I, I don't really have questions, Tom. I just have a couple of comments. I read, been through the month, the reports from all the departments. I think we need to, you know, publicly acknowledge a couple of things. One is the, uh, gift, a pretty substantial gift from the Bearing Star Insurance Company for a gift to the food bank, the, the, at our adult center was pretty substantial around the holidays. And I think we should acknowledge that. And also that the Russell family through American Press Solutions continued their tradition of giving to the police department through a, a donation of an, an electric bicycle, electric, this is bicycle. I think we should acknowledge that gift as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Um, yes, that's, uh, that's great news. The, the only other thing that came up was it talked a little bit about the, um, the proposed brewery. And I know that hasn't come before the board, but, um, is that, uh, going to be, does that fall under a regular liquor license when you have a, a place that's brewing beer? I imagine it's just brewing beer, but, uh, I don't know, Lynn, if there's any comments on the, on the status of this project and, um-
Uh, I know that the project is going through permitting through the health department. I know that prior to, um, Beverly's retirement, she had been out to the site. Uh, I know that they've pulled, uh, building permits. Um, and I, maybe Debbie can correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, breweries are licensed through the state and not through the local licensing authority. Um, but they would likely need, you know, additional permits if they were to do any entertainment or offer any, uh, food on the site as well.
Okay, that's, that's good. And, um, I guess I'm just curious. Do, I don't know if we have any entertainment licenses in town. Deb, I've never heard of that before. You probably would know.
We did.
Pardon?
We did one year for, um, Ume. They wanted to have some music. I don't think they ever followed through with it and they never, um, applied again.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right. A- any other questions for town manager on her report? Okay, so we've, uh, already done number ten, discussion with Brian Ash. So we go to the whole business, which is really looking for an approval of the, uh, twelve, twenty-one, twenty meeting minutes. Can I, a motion?
I move we approve the minutes of the December twenty-first, twenty-twenty regular select board meeting.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Debbie, do a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we now move to new business. And we'll talk about the fiscal year twenty-twenty audit, this audit report and acceptance of that report. And I know that we have, uh, Peter Landon here from our audit committee and, uh, Paul Mesterzak. And I believe I will turn it over to you, Paul.
Great. Uh, you should have received two documents within the packet, the first being a hundred and thirty-three page document, um, called the annual, the comprehensive annual financial report. Um, just basically there, that's a three-part report. The first section, the introduction and the last section, the statistical, uh, re- reporting is done internally. But the bigger part of the report is the FY twenty audit. And for that, we have Tanya Campbell here as a partner in, uh, Mulan Sin CPAs who, um, manage the audit for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. She's here to do a brief presentation and get an acceptance of the audit for two thousand and twenty. And then Peter Landon has a couple of words to say, um, regarding the audit committee's recommendation and a few other comments on such. So I will turn it over to Tanya, who again, does have a brief presentation on the FY twenty-twenty audit.
Thanks, Paul. Good evening, everyone. Um, Lynn, I'm gonna ask to share my screen so I can bring up the PowerPoint. It's those things. It's disabled.
So the LCTV version is breaking up badly.
Honey, I just made you a co-host. See if that will help.
I think that's gonna do it. All right, can everyone see? See their presentation?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Getting used to used to this uh board presentations via Zoom and all this fun stuff. It's a totally different world now. Um so good evening, everyone. As Paul said, I'm here tonight to present the results of the town's fiscal year twenty twenty audit. I I want to start by giving kind of a brief um kind of a brief discussion about the nature and purpose of a financial statement audit, including um. The roles of Mulan Sin as the independent auditor, as well as uh discuss management's responsibilities. And some of the select board responsibilities in terms of the audit process. Um we certainly won't spend, you know, time reviewing the entire hundred and thirty-page document um of the CAFER. But I do want to touch on some of the key numbers that we kind of focus on every year. Um and then briefly discuss the town's um management letter comment recommendations. And just feel free to stop me at any time if anyone has any questions. Now, in terms of our responsibilities as the independent auditor, we are ultimately responsible for expressing an opinion on the town's financial statements. We're also responsible for planning and performing our audit to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. As you know, I mentioned in prior year presentations, an audit does not provide a hundred percent assurance that every transaction or balance is looked at as part of the audit process. Therefore, we cannot provide absolute assurance. Instead, our audits are conducted under a set of standards known as government auditing standards. Those standards require that we plan to perform our audit using a concept known as materiality. Now, materiality will vary based on the size of the entity and it also varies based on the different um components of the town. And in fiscal year two the uh twenty twenty, the materiality for the town's general fund or your main operating fund was about four hundred thousand dollars. Now, that doesn't mean we don't look at anything below that amount because we certainly do. It just means that the auditing standards say we should focus our testing on the balances at or above that level. Now, so just wanted to throw a quick reminder that having an audit does not relieve management of its responsibilities in regards to the financial statements themselves. Now, in terms of management's responsibilities in relation to our audit, um management is ultimately responsible for the town's financial statements. They are also responsible for establishing and maintaining internal controls um over financial reporting. And making sure that um the town has processes and procedures in place to comply with the laws and regulations that are applicable to the town's activities. During the audit, management is responsible for providing us with um all the financial records and related information that we need to conduct our audit. And provide that in the timely fashion for us. And at the end of the audit, management also provides us with a letter that confirms the representations that were made to us during the audit. That they were indeed faithful and and accurate at the at the time they made those representations. Now, in terms of the select board's responsibilities, select board is responsible for um providing oversight over the entire process. So providing um oversight over the the town's financial statements as well as the internal controls and the town's risk assessment evaluation. That's really like an ongoing process that happens throughout the year. You know, it's not something that's done in one meeting, but um that is part of uh your responsibilities as the select board. You're also responsible for reviewing the management letter that contains recommendations from um the ex in independent auditor. Now, in terms of the comprehensive annual financial report certification, uh fiscal year twenty twenty will be the town's fifth CAFER submission. And the previous three submissions were awarded the Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting, which um Paul proudly displays. I can't believe it's not in the background right now, Paul, but um in his office. Um it really is quite an accomplishment. Um it it really speaks to the quality of the financial team that the town has. You know, not every severe town goes through the process of compiling a CAFER and it and it is a lot of work. So I just wanna I point that out and really um and and really bring light to the fact that it is accomplishment that the town does do this and it does get certified um on an annual basis, so. Now, in terms of the submission for this fiscal year, um we are usually doing this presentation in December. And um the CAFER is um required to be submitted by December thirty first. However, this year there was a delay as everything is currently delayed with the ongoing pandemic. But um the retirement system um audit report uh wasn't received until um December thirtieth. So we we could not finish the CAFER and get this um get it uh completed and the whole this whole process um done by twelve thirty one. So we have found an extension and it is required to be submitted by um February first, which we are on schedule to to meet that deadline with no issues. Um after the CAFER is submitted, then it goes to um at least three members of the Special Review Committee. And um they perform the review and provide feedback. And it's usually, you know, um turned around in about four months or so. It can it can take up to um six months to um to know the results of the CAFER submission. And so everyone kind of anxiously waits for that uh for that uh certification to come in. Does anyone have any questions? This point? Now, in terms of the CAFER, it is presented under roles established by the Government Accounting Standards Board. Which also known as GASB. And there are essentially six components to the CAFER. The first is management's narrative, which Paul had mentioned, um is compiled on behalf of the town. And and it includes information about the history of the town as well as um information about the local economy and other capital and financial information. This is one of the required components of the CAFER. And if the town um prepared just a regular uh set of financial statements, this section would not be included. Next comes the audit opinion, which is the only part of the financial statements that actually belongs to us as the independent auditors. We issued the town an unqualified opinion in fiscal year twenty twenty, meaning that based on the results of our testing. We found that the town was in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. After that comes management's discussion and analysis, which is a required narrative. And it's essentially like an executive summary to the financial statements. It um explains the what is included in the financial statements as well as some of the key results of operations from the past fiscal year. It there are certain um required components to this section and we typically compile it on behalf of our clients. After that comes your two sets of your financial statements themselves. You have um your fund basis statements and your government-wide statements with which we will like take a look at and uh and talk a little bit about in a few minutes. After those come your footnotes and your required and other supplemental information, which provide um a lot more detail and disclosures pertaining to the actual numbers that are reported in the financial statement pages themselves. And lastly comes the statistical section, which is also another required component of the CAFER. And and similar to um the management's narrative in the beginning of the CAFER, this section would not be there had you presented a regular set of financial statements. Um it includes a bunch of um really great tables about where what statistical information about the town's operations, um rates, the local economy and lots of other great financial information. So it's a really good um area to gather a kind of a ten-year history of of uh statist- statistical information about the town. Now, I don't know if um people have the CAFER printed out or if everyone if people are looking at on the screen. If you wanted to look along along, um the first page you're gonna look at is page thirty-four of the actual statements themselves. Um it's actually page forty-two of the PDF if you were gonna kind of just flip to that page um electronically. Um. Now, this page is called the balance sheet and it is one of the town's fund basis statements. Now, the fund basis statements are um the seven statements that are more in line with the how the town presents things um on a daily basis and how the town's records are kept. Um the balance sheet, uh you know, on the right-hand side of this the screen, there's just kind of a little snippet of the lower left-hand corner of the balance sheet. I didn't have room to put the entire thing on there, but um I wanted to take a look at the general fund unassigned balance. Now, this the balance that I have boxed out in red there of about eight point two million dollars is made up of essentially two numbers. Um one portion of that is the town's general stabilization fund, which at the end of fiscal twenty twenty, what had a balance of approximately four point two million dollars. That balance itself represents about seven point seven percent of the town's uh tax levy for fiscal twenty. You know, per DORI's recommendation, somewhere around ten percent is a balance that um. You know, cities and towns should shoot for to have set aside in the stabilization fund. So the town itself has a, you know, has a very healthy balance in the stabilization fund. And I know that the town is committed to um putting money aside in that fund annually when they can out of free cash. And um so, you know, from our perspective, that's a very healthy balance. Um and it would, you know, cover the town had, you know, in case of emergencies or the needs there. The other portion of that um unassigned fund balance is uh your general fund unreserved balance, which had a balance of approximately four million dollars at the end of fiscal year twenty. And that represents about seven point three percent of the town's tax levy, also a very healthy balance. Um if you want to think about it this way, that that balance itself is um essentially the starting point for the town's free cash calculation. Which at the for fiscal year twenty, the town's certified free cash was right around two and a half million dollars. Um that number represents about just over three and a half percent of the town's annual operating budget. And per DORI's recommendations, anywhere between um three and five percent is is kind of a good number um in terms of what cities and towns should should be generating for free cash on a yearly basis. So the town itself is um that balance is is healthy and is is right in, you know, within that recommended range, so. If anyone have any number or questions on the numbers I just went over there?
Tanya, this Tanya, this is Mark. I don't have a question about the numbers, but I think it always come up about stabilization fund and unreserved fund. You know, what's the stabilization fund? When when is it justified to use the stabilization fund? When would, you know, contents or or other people say, yeah, go dip into stabilization fund? I mean, it's a it's a global pandemic.
Right.
If uh uh enough of a rainy day to use a stabilization fund or not? I I guess that's where I'm headed.
Right, um I guess it depends. I mean, it really should be, you know, simulated free cash. It should be used for one-time extraordinary things is what I would I would say, you know, DORI would recommend and we would recommend. It certainly shouldn't be used for um normal operating activities on an annual basis. Um, you know, global pandemic is seems reasonable to, you know, depending on what the type of expenses are. If they're not part of your annual budget, then it could be used. Obviously, I I feel like that's one of those like, you don't want to touch it unless you absolutely have to kind of um kind of funds. Um if there's other options, um I've seen uh towns take it out of stabilization fund with the intent of, you know, putting it back once. Once um free cash is certified or or things like that in case they need it um kind of in a pinch, but. I mean, it's really up to the town's discretion, but it really should be used um only if needed.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Everyone else have any other questions on this slide? The next page we will be looking at in the financial statements is page thirty-two, which in the PDF is on page forty, I believe. And this page is the town's statement of net position. Now, the statement in that position is one of the government-wide statements. Now, and the government-wide statements um are different from the fund-based statements. So they essentially take the town's operations and consolidate the funds together and only distinguish between your governmental activities and your business-type activities. Your governmental activities include things such as your general fund, um your town grant funds, your capital project funds, uh your stabilization fund. And the business-type activities represent the the town's um enterprise funds. And, you know, when consolidating this these sets of statements, we essentially take your fund-based statements and add items such as. The town's capital assets or your long-term bonds payable and um other long-term liabilities such as your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. So these statements themselves, um you know, do a good job kind of showing the true assets and liabilities of the town. Um which which aren't reported on um your typical, your fund-based statements, so. Um so that's what these statements um are good at doing. Now, um two of the key numbers I want to talk about on this page are your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. Which, you know, we we discussed every year. I know they're hot topics and and they're they're really big numbers. Um so I didn't uh I feel the need to have a conversation about them. Um now, the town's net pension liability, if you recall, is your share of the Hampden County Retirement System's unfunded liability. In fiscal year twenty twenty, that liability was um about forty-eight point three million dollars, which saw three hundred thousand dollar decrease from the prior year. Um part of the reason for this decrease was the town's share of the overall liability itself decreased slightly from the prior year. And that kind of gets adjusted on the annual basis depending on um the the covered payroll amounts that are submitted by each town. Um the system itself also saw better market results in calendar year two thousand nineteen. Um so as a result, the system went from being forty-seven percent funded to up to fifty percent funded. So um when their funding percentage increased, their overall liability decreases, so therefore your share goes down slightly. If anyone have any questions on the net pension liability? Uh now, in terms of the town's net OPEB liability, um at the end of twenty twenty, that liability was just under thirty million dollars. And as you can see, that liability de- did decrease over um ten million dollars from the prior year. Um a couple of the the key changes that that caused that decrease was um every year, the actuary is required to update the discount rate. Which is used to amortize and calculate the liability. Um the town's discount rate increased from um four point four six percent up to just over five and a half percent in twenty twenty. Um which was unusual. For the most part, we saw a decrease in the discount rate because of how it's required to be calculated. But um the town moved um their investments from mainly CDs, um is what the OPEB trust fund was invested in in the prior year. Um over to the state, the state um trust fund for investments. So this saw much better returns and therefore um therefore the discount rate actually went up, which caused your liability to go down. Because the returns are gonna be much better um in years to come than they would be um in comparison to deposits. Um they also uh there was a decrease in liability due due to the fact that healthcare costs didn't go up as much as the actuary had anticipated in the prior year. So they kind of do a look back and see how much they thought it was gonna go up and if it doesn't um increase. And if it doesn't, um, increase as much, they adjust the liability accordingly. So that also caused the, um, OPEB liability to decrease from the prior year. Well, that is good. That's good news. Does anyone have any questions on the OPEB liability?
I, I have one question, uh, Tanya. So what is the percentage that the system is funded? Is it similar to the pension liability where it says fifty percent? Do we have a similar figure?
Oh, yeah, we do. I don't have that noted here, um. It should be recorded in the notes to the financiers. I think it's around.
Fifty percent.
How much?
I thought it was around fifty percent currently.
Uh, your OPEB?
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the pension liability.
You're talking about the OPEB, right, Tom?
Yes, I am talking about the OPEB.
Yeah, so, I can't, I can't log into this right for a second, um. I'm sorry, I don't have that number.
About eight, eight or nine percent maybe in that.
I was gonna say around ten percent, um.
I think there's about four million in the, uh, in the OPEB, um, uh, trust fund, so it is about ten percent.
Right, so just over ten percent funded, so it's not, you know, you're definitely on par with a lot of other cities and towns I've seen in terms of percent funded, but shifting and, shifting the investment, um, strategy and, and investing in the state trust fund, um, definitely causes a, you know, a shift in that liability, a decrease in that liability, so. Um, and your, and your, um, OPEB trust fund is gonna grow at a much faster rate too. So both of those are gonna, you know, offset each other a little bit more every year.
Okay, and some of these figures, you had a range of like, you know, three to seven percent or something. Is there any kind of range for OPEB or is it really specific to communities so you can't?
Oh, in terms of how much they have funded?
Yeah.
Um, not, not from what I've seen. I mean, oh, you're not required to fund OPEB liability at this point in time. Um, if you don't have an OPEB trust fund by now, um, it's definitely looked poorly upon. But the state or, there's just no, um, no requirement to put money into it. So, you know, cities and towns are kinda left to, to do whatever they feel they can do or whatever they feel they, they need to put into that fund. Um, some places, you know, just don't have the money to, um, contribute to that fund at this point in time. And, and because they're not required to fund it, they, they haven't put money in. Um, other communities borrowed the entire amount and then put that in the trust fund, so they show it, they're showing it's fully funded. So I feel like it ranges from, from community to community and, and, um, you know, from what we've seen, what I've seen in terms of audits, it's, you know, ten to twenty percent is a pretty healthy balance, um, so.
Okay. But the advantage to moving that up to, like, from ten percent to twenty percent would be that in the future, as, you know, liabilities for insurance keep, continue to grow and so forth, that we'd just be in a better, it would create less, um, we'll put less pressure on our, uh, on our budget if we could have a higher percentage there, right?
Hey, yes, pay as you go would be, uh, favorably affected.
Right, right. You could actually pull money out of that trust fund to pay retiree health insurance costs and, um, use that as a funding source if, if maybe.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else have any other questions on any of those numbers? That was all I had for discussion about the financial statements, so the caper itself, um. You know, moving on to the management letter, um, there are a couple of different types of comments that can be reported in the, in the management letter. Um, the first two are much more significant than the last, um, noted on here. And neither of, there was no material weaknesses nor there were there significant deficiencies reported in the town's management letter in twenty twenty. Um, nor have we ever reported one of those types of issues in the town's management letter. So no, um, there's no issues in the management letter that are overly concerning or, um, we feel, uh, need to be, um, brought to attention to, to management. But we did want to discuss them tonight if anyone had any questions. Um, you know, the types of comments we've reported are just suggestion, suggestions for, um, procedural improvements or recommendations for changes in the internal controls. Um, I believe Paul was gonna talk a little bit about that. I know he's still working with the town departments on, um, gathering responses to the management letter.
If, if, if the board recall, they normally prepare an audit correction report, um, and that coincides with the responses that will go into the management letter. I will have that for the board for the next meeting to go over individually what those findings are and the plan to rectify them with the timetables, um, attached to each, um, each, each, for each finding to be rectified.
Okay. Um, so that, that was it for my presentation. I know, um.
On the management letter, Tanya, you wanna explain, uh, the fact that the IT, uh, cybersecurity issue is no longer there?
Yes, we did remove the issue, um, that was noted, uh, for a few years in the management letter comment, um, regarding, um, approving IT controls, um. Lynn came to one of the audit committee meetings and, um, we had an in-depth conversation about that and, and the steps that, um, and improvements that the town is, is taking to, um, and, and all sorts of areas around, um, IT and IT security. Um, I know the town has implemented, um, uh, one of those programs where, like a, a phishing program where you basically like test people and, 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 uh, try to get them to just be aware that, you know, there are these emails that come in and they look, um, like it could be really urgent and, and look official, but, um, you know, people just need to be aware that, that those are out there. Um, one of the ways of doing, doing that effectively is setting up this program that kinda mimics that, so people get used to looking for these things. Because everyone knows, I feel like, you know, every week you turn around and look at the newspaper and there's another town or another entity that has, um, someone clicked on a, a link in an email or sent, or wired someone money, um, and it shouldn't have happened. So it's, it's, it's pretty prevalent there right now. So, so that comment is gone and the town is, is really, um, focused on making improvements there, which is, which is wonderful.
Hey, Tanya, thank you, um, and Paul, you're, oh, I, you see a question for Mark, yes?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask my annual question. Tanya, have you had a chance to talk to our audit committee absent the presence of our management team?
Yes, I have, and everyone has, my information has reached out to me, um, if they have any concerns as part of the audit process.
Tom, um, you know, Steve Landen, uh, I'm the third presenter here. The, I just wanna quickly go over, uh, the part of the annual report that Tanya referred to as statistical ten-year trended report. And that ten-year trended report is not just data, it's, can be interpreted. And four or five things I'd like to mention is that the town debt, uh, two thousand ten, ten years ago, was eight million dollars and today we're in the high seventies and pushing eighty million dollars. And if we do a middle school down the road, we're gonna be up in the hundred-plus million-dollar range. Um, that's a significant change and it, the way it impacts about the, uh, ongoing, uh, debt service is about five million dollars. I don't know what debt service was in two thousand ten when the outstanding's were eight million, but, um, it's, it's a significant change in the balance sheet and, uh, an allocation of, of revenue to service a debt. It's not like the federal government, which seems to be out of control, but we, this is well-measured. It's within the ratios that are outlined in the select board policies. Um, and it was planned and we've got some wonderful brand-new facilities on the, as a result of this. Uh, the high school, DBW, uh, adult center and Wolf Swamp Fields. Um, the, number two is the one that Tanya already covered, which is the, uh, unfunded pension liability. What's, what's interesting, that pension liability ten years ago was sixteen million dollars, the unfunded, and now it's forty-six million dollars. But the irony of that is, the state legislation says that unfunded liability should go to zero by two thousand thirty-six. And in, instead of going the way that the state legislation, uh, directs things, it's going up. And our annual required payment, as different, Tanya said, there's no annual required payment on OPEB. It's discretionary, but this one is not discretionary and it's about three million five a year. So I don't know what it was back in two thousand ten, but I, it was probably a lot less than three million five. So, uh, number three is local aid. The, um, local aid, in my opinion, is a misnomer for a ta- suburban town. If you were a gateway city, there's thirty-five of them in the Commonwealth. You get ninety percent of your school budget paid by the state under local aid, chapter seventy. If you're in a suburban community like ours, um, with middle-income people and, and, and above, you, you're looking at ten percent maybe. I mean, we've got a school budget of fifty million and, uh, or forty when you add all the benefits and, uh, other, uh, costs of operation. And we get five to six million in local aid. And that five to six million on that ten-year look that Tanya said was a statistical report, guess what it was in two thousand and ten? It was five, six million dollars. And the reason I brazenly put up my hand to talk to Senator, Representative Ash was that the means testing, you know, is really important for the survival of the inner cities. And I know progressive, I think progressivity has gone amok and it's, it's pushed, uh, no increase in local aid and our budget just for schools is, uh, was thirty million tens of years ago and it's four, uh, forty-five billion now. And so the legis, guess what we send to the state in income tax re, um, our fifteen thousand residents sent forty-nine million dollars a year to the state. And we get back for education and a, a small pittance in chapter ninety for transportation and a small unrestricted amount, we get back about seven million dollars. So it, it's, uh, we, we're, uh, we do state aid, we don't do local aid. Um, number three on the hit list is, uh, proposition two and a half, which was, was brought up by Paul and he gave a really good rundown to the audit committee of where we are. And, you know, he and others in, in the finance committee have put, put together a model, which is a very useful tool. And, uh, since Article fourteen was defeated in the June town meeting, um, you know, we think it's a risk to ignore, like Paul just explained to Representative Ash, that, uh, we've gotta get at it before it hits us. And the sales of real estate increase if it doesn't, you know, do better than a rate of inflation consistently. We're gonna hit that wall and we're gonna hit it as soon as three to four years, um, and that without, the tax ceiling committee's gotta get back since the vote on Article fourteen was, uh, was defeated. Uh, last item, level funding of an underfunded budget is not acceptable. And we had this going on in streets, bridges and sidewalks in the town twenty-five years ago. And the select board, Mr. Foster and Mr. Gold and others pushed up the capital expenditures that, from we were paltry two point something percent to three point five. And take a look at our sidewalks and our roads and our bridges, they're, and our un- under the surface, infrastructure has improved substantially. Right now, if you wanna look back and, and would, have very few advocates at this point, but our parks, our fields and our facilities maintenance is in that category. So if we continue to push out budgets that are level-funded and, uh, they're gonna, they're just gonna deteriorate and those are assets on a balance sheet. We should depreciate them at a faster rate than we're required to by accounting laws because we're letting them depreciate from underfunding maintenance and repairs. Um, I'd like to end on, uh, three positive notes. Um, the audit committee is may, I'm the only gray-haired older person on the committee. There are four robust, highly professional forty-year-olds. And thanks the select board for finding these people and getting them to our portal. And they're gonna be part of a solid leadership team going forward. And number two is the wisdom of Ernie Welker and his audit committee in picking Melanson CPAs. And Tanya Campbell, our, uh, relationship manager, audit manager, uh, they're doing a top-notch job. Um, so basically, uh, the third one was, in our S and P report, credit report of October of last year, it says, and this is a compliment to the finance department and Tanya teetered up with her cap, her, uh, uh, Gaz, Gazvee discussion, uh, we view town management is very strong with strong financial policies and practices under our financial management assessment. This is from Standard and Poor's. This is not, uh, a rinky-dink outfit. And their assessment methodology indicating, indicates financial practices are strong, well-embedded and likely sustainable. So those are the, uh, comments of Standard and Poor's and, uh, I, the whole audit committee, all five of us, full committee, robust, active, uh, we, the last thing I have to say is we recommend approval, that the audit committee voted to the select board to recommend approval of the cap, the report, the financial reports of the town of Long Meadow and, uh, the opinion of Melanson, uh, for the year ending June thirty, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, thank you, Peter, for your.
You're welcome. If I went correct, that's two thousand and twenty, Peter.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Yes, thank, oh my God, how could I forget twenty? Thank you.
Oh, no, great, thank you and, and thank you, uh, you know, the committee, I, I know so, folks are probably listening in, but, you know, the select board really, uh, appreciate your work. It's a great asset to town to have, uh, an audit committee, um, to make sure everything is in order. And, and, uh, I know you guys spend a lot of time as volunteers doing that and, um, again.
And we appreciate Mark's bold question every year, have we met independently? Because that's an important step for, for an audit committee and, uh, to do that.
And, and, and I also learned through the presentation that, that Tanya has something to do with us having to take all those online trainings, which is, it's the most fun part of, like, really doing that, so.
Yes, obviously, yeah.
It makes me feel younger, you know, having to do this.
Well, we, we got a good creditor rating from Standard and Poor's and we got some phenomenal, uh, Paul got the bonding out to the market on this summer and Lynn at, at absolutely perfect. We, we hit the low, low point in the bond, bond market and, uh, took, took full advantage of it. That, that's an art.
Yes, and I, and I think the, the artist is Paul Besterzak. He's the best we, we never could replace him. I know that. Um, so again, thanks, Paul, for pulling this, uh, presentation together. I don't know if there's any other questions from the board. Okay, hearing none, we will move on.
I, I'd like to make a motion to accept the audit, report, the audit from the Lanson CPAs, the audit committee.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, definitely you conduct a roll house, uh, you know, roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, we move forward and, uh, we wait till next year for the next, uh, audit committee document. Okay, now, uh, a little excitement, um, we have an adult center gift and, uh, naming of a gymnasium to discuss. And I believe I should go right to, um, I believe I should go right to um Mary Beth Bergeron, unless Lynn, is there anything you want to say first? Okay, so uh Mary Beth, are you with us?
I am with you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, first off, I'll say that um what I have to say is nowhere near as complex as what Tanya just went through. So I think you'll all be able to follow along with me fairly easily. Um. Uh just as a kind of a backup reminder, in December of two thousand eighteen, actually, we had a number of meeting, meetings about the um adult center. And uh fundraising and naming opportunities for the building. Um, the policy that was established at that time um in December two thousand eighteen. Uh required that the naming of the building or the gymnasium would have a select board approval. I believe that the um idea behind that, based on the conversations, was that. Um, you know, we needed to bring forward a uh stellar reputable individual. Who was willing to contribute a significant amount of money to the town for the adult center. Um uh enhancements, construction, et cetera. So uh I have been successful in securing a pledge from um. Esprely Blake and his wife Helen um to name the gymnasium. Um in kind of in concert with that and and you know during the conversations with other people. Um it became pretty evident that we really need to put some signage on the building and or at the street sign. For wayfinding because at Greenwood, there is more than one gymnasium. There's a gymnasium, obviously, at the new building, which is incredibly beautiful. And of course, the gymnasium at the um at Greenwood. So I asked the architect to do some schematics to present to you tonight. Um for the street sign, the sign that would be down at the street as well as what had been planned and will continue to be planned. Um, there's two arches, one at the adult center entrance, main entrance, and one at the gymnasium main entrance where there are. Uh stand up letters that are installed. Um and so I'm here basically to uh get your approval to proceed with that.
Okay, great. Um. It's pretty exciting to get this kind of information and I know you've done a lot of work and I know there's a lot of other members in the town who've contributed, but. Uh but this is above and beyond and and I don't know how we would thank uh Presley and Helen Blake uh for this contribution. And uh it's pretty exciting. Are there any questions from the board? Mark old?
Yeah, I have a few. First, Mary Beth, I do want to comment on the work you did to get kinds of donations you've gotten. You know, but I do have to say a couple of things. First of all, when I looked at the signs, I. Honest to goodness, I looked at it and I said, that's the sign that sits over the entrance to Auschwitz. It it's 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 appalling to me. It's actually offensive based on the design of that. And I'd ask that you go look at that again. The curved lettering, I. I I think that arch type opening, I saw it immediately and that's what I thought and and I would ask that we not do that.
That's interesting. Yeah, let me let me just say, Mark, I I I didn't get that, you know, and as soon as you brought it up, I understand what you're saying. There is supposed to be letters under the arch of the at the entrance to the adult center as well. I will certainly bring up your comments with the um in in reference to what that implication could be. And um I certainly would support your position on that. So I will bring that up at the next building committee meeting. I will tell the architect and the contractor to hold on any installation of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
The thing I I I wanted to comment about was, you know, I I see this as re legislating or re re. Activating a policy we've already discussed, debated at. Dream lengths and come up with a policy, which was that we were gonna put up signage, we were gonna put up. I didn't support the plaques, but that's the vote that the select board took back then to put up plaques on individual rooms. And I think that we we've made that, had that discussion, made that vote. I think it's appropriate to do it. Nowhere did we say whether the plaques were two inches by two inches or two feet by three feet. Literally, the naming of the of the gymnasium seems to be appropriate based on the gift that was solicited and and pledged and I have no. No problem with that, but I think we're going back and and revisiting a signage discussion that we've already had. And I I just don't understand frankly why this discussion is back on the agenda here. Other than the discussion of do we accept this gift and name this gift for these most generous philanthropists, which I have no problem. It's 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 re legislating a discussion on signage, which is is of a concern.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Uh any other comments from the select board members?
Yeah, I have a comment too, Tom. You know, having having traveled to several concert or uh. Uh communist type from the Nazi camps, I agree with what Mark said. That was the first thing that struck me too. Is that that's a fairly symbolic sign of what I watch when I travel across Europe. And I also agree with Mark on the one point. We had this debate before. We were talking about uh inside the buildings, putting a plaque up and saying this room belongs to so and so and so and so. And it was never the intent to do would be external display of of any name being attached to that building. Uh I I can't support it because I think that's something that should have been force right. And upfront when we talked to our taxpayers when they funded this building to all of a sudden have a. Highest bidder have their name flashing on the top of this building out in front. I I think it's inappropriate. Uh we haven't done it in any other buildings in town. And I think it's inappropriate to start uh on this building to start a precedent. So if we didn't do it to high school, I'm certain. We may have Big Y that wants to put their name on the high school up there. I'm sure they could bring up some money. That has nothing to do with the donation. I think that's fantastic and I think, you know, Mary Beth's done a great job. It's just I personally uh am very much opposed to having it on the outside of those buildings.
Okay, any other? Comments from select board members? You know, I know that um I've seen, uh you know, Springfield College, we had a a track put in, uh. Uh Presley Blake, uh it's Blakefield and uh, you know, there's a name out there and it's. I've never heard anyone complain about it. Um, you know, I think that, you know, this is something we discussed and that. We're lucky to get this kind of a contribution and that. You know, I have no problem with the naming if if the the way this is structured is I've never been to Auschwitz or any place like that, so. I wouldn't, I think we could redo the drawings, uh if that's appropriate, I I would support that. But the um, you know, I I just, it's not a big deal. I mean, people are not gonna look at it. As as this is this is the town of Long Meadows Senior Adult Center. Uh it's it's not Presley Blake's and his wife Helen's. I don't see how people are gonna misread that.
So what's the expectation of Mr. Blake uh? When he generously wrote the check?
Uh I I certainly led them to believe that the building, that the gymnasium was going to be named for them and there certainly would be an interior plaque. Uh but um I didn't have any specific promises, which is why I had these designs done. I I am frankly more concerned about wayfinding and we I would expect that. Um is particularly with the gymnasium that we will have out of town people um coming over to Greenwood to play in the gymnasium. Or to walk the walking track or whatever. And I think signage on the exterior is important. I've had some people say to me they didn't even realize there was a gymnasium there. Um uh so I I just think it's appropriate to put a name somewhere on the outside and, you know, perhaps, you know, deleting. Both of those arch stand up signs is appropriate. I I kind of definitely, I'd honestly say I agree with you, Mark. Um but at least naming, putting it either on the building itself where it says the Blake Gymnasium. Um or on that street sign, which is, you know, it's gonna be very tiny. But at least it would be legible where people would know this and it's sort of just wayfinding.
So 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 Blake is.
Blake. Peter, this is a select board meeting, not an open meeting. Peter, it's a select board meeting, not an open meeting, Tom. It's a select board meeting, not an.
Can I explain to you?
No, it's a select board meeting, which is not an open meeting, Peter.
I was part of the solicitation of.
Peter, it's not an open meeting. It's not an open meeting. It's a select board meeting. Tom, if you want it to be an open meeting, then let's schedule an open meeting to discuss, but this is a select.
Okay, yes, you're correct. Um if you could just, um. I guess you could make some comments in in a future meeting if you'd like. Um but yes, this is a select board meeting. And so are there any other comments?
Could I just make one additional comment? It is not that this is that unusual in town. We have other areas in town. And specifically sports areas named after people. I mean, there's that I can think of off the top of my head. Uh there's a couple of ball fields that are named after people. So I don't think that the gymnasium being named is really outside of what has been done in the past for sports.
Tom, I just want to make it clear. I I support naming. We agree to have a naming opportunity for the gymnasium. I think that was the the basis, I won't say the promise, but the basis behind the gift. I support naming the gymnasium, the way the way, you know, we've said we were gonna name things and recognize it. I also think it's important to have, you know, appropriate, whatever that is, signage for wayfinders. I mean, we've got a. A sign up there that says Jim Russell Road or or whatever it is. I mean, so people know where they're going. But it's a difference between that and plastering the name on the on the outside of the building. And Tom, I have to say. That, you know, universities are, you know, they're very different from municipalities. They're private institutions that get their facilities through fundraising and naming opportunities. So. I I understand and and respect your comments about what Springfield College did, but the town of Long Meadow is different. That I have, you know, I mean, we've got rooms in buildings named after people, Mary Beth, and, you know, we. You know, we discussed it. I wasn't, you know, I didn't prevail in my comments about, if you recall, I was the one who said. We should just have a a wall of of honor and not put plaques around the building. I wasn't successful convincing people to do that. I understand that. So we're gonna have plaques around the building. I buy into that. I think there ought to be a plaque around the building. And if we need to stay, have a sign that says Long Meadow Adult Center and Presley and and Blake Gymnasium. And with an arrow pointing to the right place, I got no problem with that. And and Tom, if you want to, I'll propose a motion.
Isn't that with? Isn't that with the street sign?
Gymnasium, but I'm not supporting the signage. Beyond what's already in our policy.
Right. Well, I don't think that would motion would get us too far then because we really are needing a motion that would. Allow us to accept the the gift and to uh, we may not agree on this exact signage. Um maybe we could, like, it sounds like uh Mary Beth would be willing to go back to the drawing board. And get some other examples of of how we could do this. But um, you know, I think that's our our choice. We're looking at a at a generous gift uh for gymnasium and um. I know that you feel a municipality handles things different, but. You know, this is perhaps a new venture for the town to have an adult center and to have it. Up to a standard that is going to be higher than what the town could afford. Because we know there are a lot of improvements that have been made to this adult center. By citizens in the community who have the means to to donate for, you know, some special features that. Everyone is gonna appreciate for a long time. And like you say, we've we've agreed to a policy. And I don't think we can change the rules at this point. Um so I personally look for a motion to accept this. Uh Steve Marantz.
I I just have a question. In terms of uh the signage, Mary Beth. I get I get the way fear. Are you, is it a suggestion that there's actually? Two signs, one outside of the building, as you enter going and one inside in the gymnasium?
This this there's two signs that um I sent over. One is in the arch and, you know, clearly. There's no support for that and, you know, now that Mark has brought that up, I'm not so sure I support it either. And we will make sure that there are no signs on either of the arches. However, I do think. I would like to see at least that street sign. That street sign is right, it's down at on almost on Maple Avenue, so. Uh Maple Road, rather. Uh it it's just a signage for, it's sort of like the fire department sign. You know, in front of the fire department or the police department. It's about that same size. I would like to see that get approved.
And um and again, one of the reasons for having, because there will be events that will be held.
Yes.
Gymnasium and we want to make sure that they don't confuse one gymnasium with the other gymnasium. You know, that this gymnasium is gonna be, you know, is the Presley and Helen Blake Gymnasium, uh you know, if we're having a concert or speakers or. Dance or whoever. Um so. I don't know if that answers any other questions.
So I. So we're 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 no longer considering the um the gymnasium signage?
On the arch.
On the arch?
Correct.
But we are considering uh the signage?
At the street.
Yeah.
What would that street sign look like, Mary Beth? I mean, do you have a drawing?
It is, it was in your, it was in your packet.
It's in the packet. If you go down to the bottom of the diagrams?
It's the next page, Mark. It's right below the gymnasium.
So it shows the council of aging, our town symbol, Long Meadow Adult Center. And the Esprely and Helen Blake Gymnasium. And it has the address on Maple Road.
Okay, I I frankly didn't get past the arches. That's how upset I was by it.
Yeah.
So is is the is the street sign outside of our of our sign policy?
No, that that street sign has been approved. I have to go back to planning, however. Um and tell them about the change in the order. The exact, that exact sign has been approved by planning. And it's part of the project.
So but that sign, it's 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 a sign that says it's the Long Meadow Senior Adult Center, right?
Yes, Long Meadow Adult Center.
Yes, and and this, you see, there's two signs, there's two diagrams. One that's that one is the before, what is planned. I don't know why I'm so hoarse. And then the second one is the proposal.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
You got it? Yeah, there's, I just wanted to make sure you knew the before and the after, what had been approved and what we're proposing.
Okay, I got you.
So, well, I guess I would like to to make a motion that uh the select board uh accepts. The two hundred thousand dollar gift from uh Presley and Helen Blake. And that we make this small addition to the signage to add their names to the gymnasium. I'm looking for a second.
Can you, can you say this again, Tom?
So I'm I'm making a motion to accept the two hundred thousand dollar gift from uh Presley and Helen Blake. On the condition that we modify the sign to add their name to it.
The street sign. Local sign.
Right, with the sign, you know, the outdoor adult center sign that we were just discussing. And we would just simply add their name to the the road sign.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All right.
Yeah, I I'd like to know why we're changing our policy. I want to know why we're changing a policy that we that we created.
So I I I asked, so what what is, so what? I I asked the question if the street sign was outside of of the scope of our sign policy.
It is.
It is, okay.
I don't know, outside of this, outside of the sign policy? I I just want, I just want to remind you.
Outside the naming policy that we adopted for the adult center.
Well, um. If you name something in the policy that you established, you said if the building or the gymnasium were to be named. We were to come to you. How do we just like name, and and I'm I'm not trying to be rude, Mark. How do we? How do we name something without identifying?
We, we created a procedure for doing that, which is to put a plaque up. It's, you know, just like we have the Karen Michaelman, you know, meeting room in the, in the old adult center. You know, we'll have the S Presley and Helen Blake Gymnasium, it'll be a, a beautiful plaque up, just like we have the Adog- Dogastino Gymnasium in the Long Meadow High School. And we have, yeah, and nowhere on the front street does it say, you know, Long Meadow High School and Dagnasio Gymnasium on that front sign. I mean, this is a perfect corollary to that. And, and it, it works in high school and I think it can work here. And, and, you know, the gift wasn't dedicated on a street based sign. And I think it can be done extraordinarily, you know, in, in a very, very respectful and, and, and way that, that really shows our, our, our thanks for, for having given the gift. Based on the, the policy we have. But like I said, you know, it, it does, it is not following the policy, which was things that would be named would be done with plaques within the building.
So I, I, um, I'm looking at the, the, what I, I think is the policy now. Um, and, and please correct me if, if I'm wrong, I'm just gonna read the language. It says, "A gift recognition program of naming opportunities within the building will be offered to the community, which will include foundations, individuals, excuse me, and companies. The contribution will be acknowledged by means of placing a plaque at the entrance to a room area slash brick slash paper, et cetera, as indicated. The gift must be in cash or cash equivalents." Um, I.
We, and we argued over that, Mark, for several meetings.
I, I, I don't see how having the name on a roadside, which actually I think will be very useful to folks if, if they need to go to the, uh, this particular gymnasium. I, I think it may be outside the purview of the policy, but I don't think it's actually relevant to the policy. I think, yes, we wanna put a plaque, as you walk into a gymnasium, there's a plaque on the side that says, this is the Blake Gymnasium. But actually, as people come to this place, having it, I mean, first of all, it's not gigantic, it's a roadside. I think the, what, what was presented in the drawing was, first of all, you might not even see it on the roadside, you gotta look carefully. But I believe if you're going to this, uh, gymnasium for a specific reason, um, you might wanna know where it is. And might say, I'm going to the adult center, and there's a gym, the Blake, I, I, who knows what, what, what is going through the mind of people going there. But I, I don't see this as violating the policy, we're ruining what the board did previously. I think it's outside of the policy. The planning board said this is okay, I'm not sure why we should say it's not okay.
I, I.
Yeah, well, just moving on to that, that, that just behind the, uh, this adult center, you know, there is a playground, Molly McAvoy Playground, you know, and that's clearly named after Molly McAvoy. Uh, who was a young woman in town who, who died at an early age. Donations were made and, uh, that playground was built. And I don't see, you know, no, I don't hear anyone objecting to that being named after Molly McAvoy.
I'm not objecting to this being named.
Gosh, I don't think, gosh, that, to having an, uh, signage, you're gonna have signage in one part of the park? Why wouldn't you have signage in another part of the park?
There's, there's not a sign that in the street that says, now, Molly McAvoy Park with this, that's on, on the street. That's the difference. It's, I'm not objecting to naming it, I think it's a wonderful way to honor the gift.
Right. So can I, can I?
You can do this too.
So I, I, I left out the, the first sentence of the next paragraph. Which says, "For the policy established on December 1st, 2014, this adult center policy is adopted, recognizing that this authority does not include the naming decisions of the entire adult center or basketball court, which would be at the sole, select board's sole discretion. Suggestions for naming the property shall come to the select board through the town manager's office, from any member of the public, or on any motion of the select board. The suggestions shall be in writing."
Mark, thank you for reading that.
I, I, I mean, I, you know, so I, I, I think it is within the scope of our naming policy and I think it's up to us. That's my interpretation of that.
Tom, can I just make one more comment?
Please do.
Yes, I, um, because of the confusion over there is what is where. The nonprofit just recently paid for and it has been installed, signage on the pool. But that's the Greenwood Community Pool. They're similar to the naming over at Reynolds Pool. That building was, had signage on it so that people could do, again, wayfinding.
Um, I guess, are we ready to call for a vote? I guess, okay. So Deb, uh, the motion is to accept the $200,000, um, contribution from the Blakes and to, um, allow the, the sign in front of the, the adult center to include the name of the gymnasium so people can find the gymnasium. Um, and Deb, if you do a roll call vote.
The, the, the street sign, like, the street sign.
Just the street sign, correct, just the street sign.
Thanks for clarifying, yes, okay. So Deb, a roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
No.
Richard?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mary Beth, thank you. Um, I know you've done a lot of hard work to get to this point. It's, uh, it's not easy to, to bring in that kind of a contribution. And I hope that you're feeling really good about, uh, this moving forward. Uh, it wasn't an, an easy, uh, vote, but, uh, you know, I, I don't think anyone's ever gonna, um, be upset about your role in this and the efforts you've made, and, and so I just wanted to thank you again.
Well, thank you, Tom, thank you. I, and I would like to say, I'd like to express my thanks to Peter, who had, um, although we had already received one donation from the, uh, Blakes. The second donation, he was instrumental in helping me get because of, of a relationship he has with the, with, uh, Presley. Where I, my relationship is more with Helen, his was with Presley and Presley took a little doing.
Okay.
Hundred and se- hundred and six, oh, sorry, Mark.
Hundred and six, yes, I know, but, but I just wanted to say, uh, when you referred to Pete, you were referring to Peter Landon.
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, uh.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next order of business, which is the, a review of the resolution in opposition of the state subsidies for wood biomass. And I will turn it over to, uh, Steve.
Thank you, Tom. Um, uh, we heard, I think, very persuasive arguments from both Frank and Cynthia. Uh, this will be somewhat of a re-iteration, but let me go ahead. Uh, as the resolution states, the Long Meadow Select Board is committed, and I should say obligated, to ensure and safeguard the health, safety, and environment of Long Meadow residents. And the title says it all, that we, the select board, do not want our residents' tax dollars to subsidize power plants that are detrimental to their own health and environment. I believe we need to pass this simple, obvious resolution because, quite remarkably, our state politicians apparently need to hear our objections. We are fortunate, our local legislators, Eric Lesser and Representative Ashy heard tonight, are very supportive of this resolution. However, other state elected officials need to hear our concerns that the air quality of Springfield, Long Meadow, and much of the Pioneer Valley will be quite negatively affected by the biomass power plant planned for Springfield. In particular, our governor, Charles Baker, needs to hear our voice. Governor Baker not only vetoed the 2020 climate legislation, he wants his Department of Energy Resources to relabel, uh, the biomass, the burning of wood as non-carbon emitting and as a renewable resource. Apparently, up is down and black and white is white in the Baker administration. Would join the long list of Massachusetts citizens and organizations who do not want polluting biomass facilities to be subsidized by the taxpayers of Massachusetts. And therefore, I move that the select board, uh, approve this resolution.
Okay. Any questions for Steve Morantz?
Tom, I have a question.
Oh, yes, Mark, thank you.
Steve, who wrote this?
This is pretty much a steal from Springfield's resolution. Uh, I changed, I, I actually wrote, I, I made a couple of changes, but in terms of, in terms of, except for the fact that Springfield passed this motion, um, I think pretty much it's, pretty much what Springfield did, as I said, a couple of exceptions, exceptions. So it's about eighty-five percent Springfield, their, their city council has, um, unanimously approved resolution.
I guess, Tom, my concern is, at least one of the "whereas" clauses, I, I don't believe is real. I don't believe it's true, I certainly don't agree with it. And, you know, I can go into the details or not, it's, clearly this is a foregone conclusion where this is going, but, but I think that, you know, it, it's a concern and I can't vote for it with, with that clause.
But which clause is that?
It's the clause, I think it, let me count which one it is, it's the fourth one. Stephen, it says, "Whereas wood-burning biomass incineration power plants are a highly polluting form of energy generation that's known to release pollutants, including fine particulate matters, volatile organic compounds, nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, and carbon dioxide." And, you know, my training is a chemical engineer. If, if you don't have the proper pollution controls, that could happen. But nobody has seen what the design is of this biomass plant and what it will actually emit.
Not, uh, actually.
A certain statement, but it's not true, we don't know.
And certainly. The supporting documents that came along with this actually have citations that do, that support entirely from the scientific community what that, that, that particular statement says. And B, in terms of what Cynthia, uh, Summer mentioned earlier, is that there, the, the specific recommendations of, of keeping pollution down. If you wanna put a wood-burning stove into your house, it has to meet certain recommendations, uh, qualification. What, what, the ones that you have to do in, in the commercial biomass plants under current legislation are very strict. They wanna reduce the current registration, uh, legislation. So I believe that what that "whereas" says is gonna go up in space. So we can argue, you know, not argue the science, fine, but the documentation, the other two documents I provided to you is there. Don't agree, you don't agree.
Okay, any other questions about?
Yeah, Tom, you know, there used to be an old expression we used to hear back when Paul Santinello was on the board. He said, "You got the votes, what are you even debating it for?" And I think that's what you got in front of you right now. I don't think anybody's gonna listen to any opposition as long as there's three votes on this board, we shouldn't push this out the door. So why don't we quit wasting time and just go for a vote since there's no, we don't have any secondary information. The only thing I got before me was one slip of paper in support of a resolution without any of the absolute opposite research showing why this resolution may be wrong. And I don't think the board has any appetite to go out and get this information or bring it to the board. I, I just don't sense that that's the mission of our board. I think we're just trying to push through, uh, uh, resolutions for, in, in support of certain political action groups. So why don't we just go ahead to the vote and put the following discussion?
Yeah, well, I, I'd like to think the days, um, of those kind of conflicts when Paul Santinello was on the board are, are over. I'd like to think that we had these discussions because people haven't totally made up their minds. Um, you know, there is, you know, when I look at this statement, you know, with "whereas," "whereas," uh, you know, there's a lot of statements. Uh, recently, we, we did sign, you know, we did put together something to, in regards to the pi- pipeline. And then we later got information back from the town council that it wasn't a good idea. Um, and so, you know, one option would be that perhaps we should have the town council look at this and see if, um, you know, if there's any problem with the town signing this, I mean, that would be one thing. Um, I also wonder if, as, um, as we look at this, you know, would, would this be something that would be going directly to the governor? Or would it be going to the committee that's going to, uh, look at the legislation?
The resolution states that it goes to Brian Ash and Lesser, who basically know it, as well as Governor Baker, uh, the, the, uh, Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Resources who wants TUE Committee, the, the committee that actually, when the Department of Energy Resources decide, the chair is in that committee to at least, as, as we learned earlier, hold hearings on this, uh, they, they can get the full discussion. And here are the issues that Richard wants to hear about why it's good or why it's bad. Although, Richard, I will tell you, there are two documents that were in the packet, along with the Attorney General's statement about why she did not think this was a particularly good idea to do. The other was the Conservation Law Foundation, which also has a bunch of citations about why this is not good. So there was more involved than just the, the, the warehouses and their force.
We need to do more wor- research and study. I mean, I read through that pretty carefully, it doesn't say, don't do it. I mean, it, you know, from, from my perspective, you know, again, it's a technical perspective. You know, if, if I said to somebody, "Why don't you like this?" And they'd say, "'Cause it pollutes and because of what it does to the atmosphere and the environment." I'd say, "Great, you know what you do? You create restrictions so that their parts per million of whatever they emit has to be this." Okay, and then the dis- then the, the, the companies or proposers have a choice. They can either make it to that level or not make it to that level. And if economically it's not viable to, to produce a, or build a plant that, that emits to that level, then they won't do it. But to just say, "We know it's bad," to me is, we know it's bad if you don't do anything about it.
Then you just, you just proved the point of this, um, resolution. Because with the standard set now, it is not economically feasible for them to build this plant unless they get state subsidies by redefining wood as non-carbon emitting and a renewable resource. If you don't do that, they can't build the plants to specifications and make money on it. They can build it, they could do it, they can't make money on it unless they have state subsidies. What this says is, you wanna go do it and you can't make any money on it financially. But we, we, as our tax dollars, try to subsidize it, you can't build the specifications. That's what that says, and that, that proves your point.
Okay. Um, now, I know at one point you had mentioned that, you know, you wanted to, um, you know, get something moving for this resolution because the governor was gonna be making a decision. And so we've heard from, uh, Representative Ash tonight, the, the governor is sort of pushing this off a little bit. Um, and I, I think it might be helpful for the board, you know, to look at some more additional documents. Um, but I, I don't know how much we would understand if it's, you know, I, I'm not sure, but do you have additional documents that would be helpful to the board in this decision?
Well, I included two that I thought were fairly substantial in terms of what they had to say about this.
Okay.
Which is, if nothing else, make, you know, don't do anything until, until, uh, yeah, first of all, the legislature needs to discuss this. And if you go back to what was said earlier, I mean, there was, the reason the legislation's on the books now is in 2010, there was going to be a citizen's petition to ban bio- biomass in the state. And the Patrick administration, um, conducted this study to, 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 to head that off. And the study came along and said, you know, this, here are the rules and regs of what you're gonna do if you're gonna do biomass. And that's been the rules, uh, you know, that's, Springfield started fighting this in 2008. From 2012 on, it's been sort of moot because of the legislation passed. Now they wanna change the rules and, uh, they're gonna change the rules. You know, we, we, we think the rules were fine the way they were. And they, you know, as I said, if they wanna build this thing, they can do it, they're just not gonna make any money on it. So they don't wanna do it without subsidies. And subsidies means my tax dollars and your tax dollars. And I, I, I think on behalf of the citizens of Long Meadow, I don't think that's where they want their money spent. That's why we're here. And I, uh, Lynn, I don't know if you actually ran this by, the resolution by the, our town attorney, did it? I can't, I, if it's, if the Springfield City Council did it, it's being built in Springfield. Um, I find it hard to believe that there would be any reason why we can't send a letter to the governor and his appointees and our state legislators saying this is our opinion.
Well, I, I.
We're not, we're not, we're not in any kind of, um, legal situation with the biomass industry. They're not building it in our community, although it's gonna affect us, that's for sure. I mean, you know, it's a couple of miles away and, as you heard earlier, it's, we all breathe the same air. I mean, you know, it's a couple miles away, and as you were earlier, it's air, we all breathe the same air. Um, so I, as I said, I would, I would move to pass this thing tonight.
Well, I I would say that, you know, having lived twenty years in Springfield and having some uh interactions with the city council and so forth, that uh, they could mess up, yes, I, you know, I've I've seen them do things the wrong way, um, so.
You wouldn't.
I'm not, I wouldn't want to bank, uh, pu- put a bet on on their documents going well. Um, now, of course, in Long Meadow, we're not facing uh any direct requests for biomass, um, but I think it might be, at this point, it might be appropriate for us to send a letter of support uh for what Springfield's feeling, and um, you know, you know, I I would be willing to go along at this point for a letter of support. Um, I'm not feeling as good about the whole, um, you know, resolution. How about how other people are feeling?
I mean, I I I think we're making a lot bigger deal out of this than I think. Um, you know, be be it a letter, a a letter, uh, you know, a letter or resolution, um, I think probably has the same type of impact, um, in terms of if we did wanna go down the resolution uh path. One thing we we could do is remove the paragraph that Mark mentioned that he's uncomfortable with. Um, that's really kind of the only paragraph that I see that kind of um has conclusory language, you know, without supporting documentation, or citations within this particular document. Um, so, and if we remove that fourth paragraph, I think, I think the the impact, uh, you know, would would be un- would be unchanged.
I think that's a good suggestion. Any other ideas?
I guess, Tom, the question I have is, is i- is the impact that our added voice is gonna make to this? You know, do we have a dog in this fight? You know, one argues that it it's air pollution, it's community pollution, it affects the people in this, citizens of Long Meadow, but if it affects the citizens of Long Meadow, are we doing this as representatives of the citizens of Long Meadow, or as individuals? Because if we're doing this as representatives of the citizens of Long Meadow, we need to get their input. We're doing this as individuals, then we should just sign it as individuals and not as representatives of the Long Meadow citizens.
Okay, good point. You know, I I think that, you know, if there was a proposal, you know, facing the town and and the town says, you know, the select board should come up with a policy uh in terms of addressing this for the town of Long Meadow, I think we'd be on uh much firmer ground than we are now.
But I I I don't, I don't think, you know, I I I hear, I hear Mark's point, I do. I I take it to heart, but I don't know, this doesn't really have any financial impact on on the on the town. Um, there there's, you know, there's no doubt that Springfield is the worst area to live in, and and the Pioneer Valley as a whole. Um, if you're an asthmatic, my son's an asthmatic, I know that very well. Um, going back to what Frank Smith said, we've also had too many nights in the emergency room with my son, um, so I I get that part of it. Um, you know, but if if anything that's going to uh even potentially increase or make our 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 air quality worse in the Pioneer Valley, um, I think that, you know, we live here, we live in the Pioneer Valley. Um, you know, particulates that are thrown into the air from a biomass plant in Springfield are going to impact our air quality in Long Meadow. Um, so I don't, I I don't necessarily think we need the, we need the town's input on this. I just, I wonder what 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 the harm is in in sending this this, a letter or sending this resolution.
Any response?
Yeah, Tom, I guess, I guess what what I keep, what I keep coming back to, um, is like a lot of issues that we are, we are dealing with on the surface, they seem pretty straightforward and simple, and and yes, we wanna protect our air, and and all the good things in life, and I and I fully support all of that. But the fact is, we're not being presented with two sides of a story. I I can't tell you, I don't have any scientific information placed before me that talks about what the potential is for pollution in our community, if this plan's gonna affect us, or or whether it's an emotionally driven decision by people that don't have the science behind them. Um, I think Mark's point was a good point, you know, it's uh, we're speaking for all the citizens, and it, you know, maybe it is a citizens issue, but from my perspective, I don't have enough information before me to validate a decision to support or deny this request in in full consciousness. And I think that's a problem that we have generically with our form of government, is because, you know, with the city council, if we had one, you'd have this, you'd have pro and con meetings, there'd be people coming in and and explaining to the whole board. We don't have that privilege with our select board type of government, we just don't have, we're not set up that way, it'd be very difficult. So we normally only get one side of the story, and we don't get that second side of the story. And I would like to see the second side of the story as we make decisions for our entire community, especially an informed decision instead of an emotional decision. Um, and I'm not saying this is not valid, I mean, I hope everybody understands me, I I'm as much for air quality as anybody else. But I also realize, you know, I used to live in Asheville, North Carolina, and we didn't have any manufacturing plants in Asheville, North Carolina, but yet we had some of the worst acid rain that you could imagine in the southeast. Because the pollution came out of Texas and come up over the Appalachians, turned into rainstorms, come down and ate up the car finish on me. So I mean, these are the type of things that, you know, the more information you got, the better decision you can make. And I and I think right now, we're just lacking some of that information for me to step forward and make a a a very valid, honest decision. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And and we've done this with other voting issues where we've, you know, we've introduced the issue once, once select board meeting, and then two weeks later, you know, we had maybe a little more information, and we and we take a vote on it, and I don't know, I it sounds like that would be helpful to do in this situation.
But I, I mean, I I I just don't know, there's, um, I don't, I don't know what what company is is proposed to to put this biomass incinerator incinerator in, but there there's no incentive for them to, um, you know, I attend a our select board meeting to present the other side of this, because they're the, you know, you know, our our skin in the game is is kind of amorphous, you know, it's 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 air quality. Um, and, you know, so, if if it was, i- i- if it was going to be located in 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 Long Meadow, sure, different, different story. Um, you know, this is, it's a little bit outside, outside the the normal um operating procedure, I think, that that we that we engage in. Um, you know, my my second point would be, you know, even if we had, I don't even know what what additional information that 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 um we'd need, but I I don't, I I'm not confident that the vote would change to to Richard's original point.
Okay, any other comments about a request for more information? Is there, would there be information that would be helpful to people um to support this kind of a resolution? All right, well, um, I agree with you, Mark, that uh the the folks who are interested in building a power plant would would have no reason to come to Long Meadow. Um, and so, as we look at this request, um, you know, we can either, um, you know, consider eliminating the one paragraph that um would make it a little more acceptable to folks on the board, or we could, you know, move this to a a pro- a future meeting. Well, I'm waiting to hear from you. What do you think?
Well, in terms of further information, uh, Mark or Richard, if you had the head of the Western Mass Asthma Association, knows all about asthma, the asthma rates in 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 the community, who I was hoping was gonna speak tonight, but was not allowed to be on the agenda, but should be more than willing to talk to you about the air quality in Hammond County. Now, that's not the same as what this plant is gonna put out, but the air, we all know, well, I don't know if we all know, but some of us know the air quality in Hammond County is 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 not the best. I mean, we're in a valley, and the air just doesn't break it out of the valley. Um, that that information should be more useful, but as I said, if you look at the two documents that came along with this, one from the the Conservation Law Foundation, and the other from the Attorney General, there are plenty of scientific data, uh, s- citations, and as well as, uh, if you take a look at, uh, I think Frank Smith mentioned the the uh, the study done in two thousand ten, which is what the, was, which is what the law was based on in two thousand twelve, that goes into major detail about uh what wood burning can and cannot do from a pollution su- uh aspect. And finally, what we want is, we want the state, we're asking our legislators to investigate this, to to hear hearings, and that's what they do. The the people wanna build this plant, they they may not wanna talk to us, but they're certainly, they will talk to the state legislature, which is what we're wanting them to do, you know, is are we, A, and also, we are speaking for the people of Long Meadow, I think that's one of the reasons we have elected officials, is we're supposed to, this is a case of, you know, I I believe this is a case of taking a lead on an issue. Uh, we're not, certainly not way out front on this one, the, our our neighbor, whose air is like next door to ours, has been doing this for twelve years. Uh, but I think that any voice that at least says, let's make sure we know what we're doing as far as building those plants, and we want that to happen, is a voice that's worth hearing. And so, yeah, I, so in all the citations I saw, and what I know, I don't need to hear more information on this, if the board does, we can, you know, we can get the, we we'll get some wood burning scientists in here, I suppose, uh, but the citations are there in the documents, so.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think that, you know, the the public, I mean, some people would go to the agenda and perhaps look at the documents, but they've seen, uh, you know, in terms of the presentation, they've seen a limited view, and so your suggestion of having a speaker come in who would talk specifically about how a a facility like this could affect Long Meadow residents, um, I think that's a good idea, so that they would understand why we're supporting this, if we do support it, or why we're not supporting it, you know, what our arguments are. Um, so I, you know, I'd be willing, I think that would be a good person to add to the agenda for our next meeting. Uh, is there other people think that would be a step forward, then we could take a vote on it, you know, in the next meeting?
Tom, the 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 one question comes to mind, uh, in the design of this facility, we all realize there there has to be a ton of environmental documents that have been produced, and and the, within those documents, it's gonna tell about the particulates. We understand that there will be airborne particulates, I I think what we don't know is, will they fall on Long Meadow, or are they gonna fall on New York City? I mean, we haven't seen any of the information, I, you know, I don't know if it's a concern for us or not, other than it's a generalized concern. It's a general concern, there's no doubt about it. Every form of plant that burns anything is going to produce particulates. It all depends on where is it gonna fall down, and where is it gonna create a health hazard, and at this point, we don't know, but we're we're making this proclamation like it's going to fall in our backyard and and poison our pools, and I just have problems with going off and signing off on documents without having the support information that supported our decision. That's my only problem with it. I I don't have a problem in the world with saying that I know they're gonna produce particulates, and it's gonna be airborne, and we we know that's gonna take place, that's why we have so many bans on outdoor, out- outdoor burning across the country, you know, we know the hazards of all that, so I hope you understand my point on this issue.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments? Okay, so um, so what are we gonna do next? What do you think?
I I personally think if there's no appetite for the board to wanna look at it any deeper, just take your vote.
Well, there's, we haven't had a motion, or a second.
Uh, yeah, it was seconded, Mark Strange seconded the motion.
I don't remember calling for a motion, I didn't ever hear a motion, so.
Yeah, there was, there was a motion, there was a motion and a second.
Okay, so, uh, Deb, could you repeat what the motion was?
No, sorry.
Okay, you're, well, you're in the same position I'm in, okay.
I got the part about uh eliminating the fourth paragraph, but it sounded more like a suggestion, and I didn't hear motion or any of that.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I I would move, I would move, we accept the resolution, uh, as presented, with the removal of the fourth paragraph of the um, uh, of the um, of the resolution.
Okay, and was seconded?
And and uh, and and otherwise to be delivered to, uh, otherwise as is.
Seconded. Okay. And uh, any further discussion? All right, Deb, you wanna take a roll call vote?
Um.
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
President.
Richard?
President.
Okay, so we uh, we'll move on to our um, our final, well, a couple, next meeting is about the uh article.
Annual Town Meeting on the second Tuesday in May, so it it again, it it helps with just setting up those timetables.
Okay, and uh, so do we need to approve this?
It would be nice, um, as long as it's acknowledged that there's no changes, um, you know, we're good with sending it out.
Okay.
The only thing I would add, um, is there are, con- uh, at the next meeting, your February first meeting, um, myself and uh the town moderator will be discussing the annual town meeting, just with an eye toward um, what the environment might be like in May, and um, whether or not um, a later date would be selected, uh, we are currently reviewing that right now with the town council and the Mass Moderators, Ma- Mass Moderators Association, so I don't know if that will have a, an impact on this timeline here, but if anything, it would just lengthen it.
Okay, all right, so.
It's not, it's not in this memo, this memo is just a kind of a deadlines memo, but you know, the the postponement or indefinite postponement, the fall town meeting, should we already be looking at more than one night for a annual town meeting? I mean, there's gotta be a huge backlog, if nothing else, just our bylaw discussions and other things.
Being discussed, and um, it will be brought forward to you for February first.
Okay.
Okay, yes, because in the past, we've had two night town meetings, so to cover everything, so. Only good suggestion, so, um, so do we have a a motion to accept the uh article submission deadline? Okay, and seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, Deb will call vote?
Um.
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and uh, the last item on the agenda is the uh annual town election date. Um, and so we have a memo saying that our primary election, let's see, uh, will be Tuesday, May fourth. Um, now, would this be changed based on COVID, or do you think we have our election, our voting process down, that we be able to stick to this date?
The May fourth date would be if there needed, um, if there was a needed preliminary, um, the annual town election um, would be June twenty-second.
Oh, yeah, okay, so May fourth, November, June twenty-second, okay. Um, so do we have a um, a motion to accept this, these dates?
I'll move that we set the annual town meet, town election for June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, with a, if necessary, a preliminary election on May fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, seconded? Do you have a second?
Seconded.
And um, Deb, you take a roll call vote?
Um.
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard? Richard?
His audio went um, went out, he's connecting again.
Okay.
While he's connecting, I'd just point out parenthetically that if the range choice voting had passed, we would, there'd been no need for a preliminary election, but it did not pass. So we do may need a preliminary.
So, uh, Richard, we're waiting to hear from you.
Yes, Debbie, my vote's yes, my vote's yes.
Thank you.
All right, so that, um, is there anything else we need to discuss on this issue? We have the terms that are expiring, the nomination papers. Um, we need to approve any of those papers?
I think we're all set with the dates.
Okay, again, uh, thank you, this was, uh, we covered a lot of ground, covered a lot of ground. And uh, thank everyone for tuning in and we'll be back in two weeks from now. Good night.
Move to adjourn?
Oh, move to adjourn, yes, all right.
Second.
Okay, uh, Deb, you want to call roll call?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone.